Three, two, one. Bag it.
I'd like to call a meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball.
And tonight, I'm getting something. All right. You want to do that while I'm doing this? Tonight, the invocation will be given by Bishop Brian Evans from the Church of Jesus Christ and Latter-day Saints. He's a Holly Springer. Welcome back. Thank you for coming.
Our loving Father in heaven, we are grateful to be gathered this evening to meet as a town council. We are grateful for the many blessings that have been poured out upon us, for the safety and for the prosperity that we receive in this town. We are so grateful for the joy and happiness that the sense of community brings to us and that we have with our families. We are grateful to be gathered tonight to be able to discuss affairs that will affect this town. And we ask that as we do so that thy Spirit will be here, that the decisions will be made that will benefit the members of this town. We ask for a special blessing upon the poor and the needy, that they will be cared for, that they will be watched out for, and that most importantly, that we will be inspired and have the desire to stop along our way to help those that may be in need. We ask for a special blessing upon those that have been affected near our areas recently with hurricane damage and natural disasters, and that we can look for ways to provide and support as well. Please bless the leaders of this town, that they will be inspired, that they will know the decisions that will be best for the members of this town. And we ask for these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Bishop. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Item number four, adjustment approval of the October 17, 2017 meeting agenda of Mayor Portem.
Motion to adopt the October 17, 2017 meeting agenda with no changes.
Second. What's been made in second law favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passed unanimously. Item number five is public comment period. Again, I would ask that those who signed up, keep it to three minutes, and thank you for your consideration for the town council, staff, and other speakers. Open to public comment period with Linda Kent. Hi there. And again, please repeat your name and address for us, please.
My name is Linda Kent. And what else did you say? I'm sorry.
Address.
Oh, your address, too.
101 Dutch Hill Road.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I present my concerns as a veterinarian and a homeschool mom, but mostly as a longtime resident. My husband and I moved to Holly Springs 18 years ago. Our three children were born in Holly Springs, and our oldest graduated from Holly Springs High School last June. One thing that drew us to our home in the Oaks of Avon Acres was the beauty of the natural landscape. The developer had done a fine job of leaving trees on each lot. A couple weeks ago, I noticed barriers being placed along the greenway that leads from Wamble Park to Bass Lake. Sure enough, my fears were confirmed that massive amounts of trees would be eradicated back to the edge of the greenway. That's right, no buffer at all is to remain between the well-traveled greenway and the next new subdivision, Park Avenue. I am curious why this is the case and who thought it was a good idea. The trees along the greenway provide much-needed shade, beauty, erosion control, and habitat for animals. These are things that are good for kids and adults in Holly Springs, so I'm wondering why they can't be preserved. Who is making these decisions? Who profits? Surely, the developers do and the residents of Holly Springs do not. What role do the mayor and town council play in shaping policies that allow for clearcutting? It is also a broader problem in our town. Trees are being clearcut for subdivisions, parking lots, businesses, and high-density housing projects. Avant Ferry Road toward Harris Lake used to be a pretty drive, but not so much anymore. I believe we are headed in the wrong direction with these policies, and ask for your consideration and help in changing the town's approach. I assure you that this concerns many residents in our town. Once these trees are clearcut, they are gone forever. Of course, developers may plant one or two trees per quarter acre, but it is paltry compared to the beauties that once stood. Please step up and require more significant buffers. Are any of you willing to do so? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you. Van Crandall.
Thank you. Good evening. Van Crandall, 4813 Salem Ridge Road here in Holly Springs. There's a public hearing later in the meeting on the agenda, Agenda Item 7A. I'd like to make some comments about the proposed project and the process related to it in the public comment period. So, the planning board recommended to deny this project 801. And staff review. Staff found the petition does not comply with minimum town requirements. Staff recommends that prior action, the town council discuss the inconsistency with the comprehensive transportation plan. So, some of the comments from the planning board were that there was inconsistency with the comprehensive transportation plan, less road improvements than typically constructed, unclear specific regarding the actual amount of road improvements that the developer intends to construct, and other items. Requested clarification on how and when road sidewalk improvements are made, if not completed by the developer of a project. So, my question is, if this was voted down by the planning board, and there's no recommendation from staff, how is it on the agenda tonight? How is it being considered by the town council to potentially approve this project? I don't understand. I mean, if it doesn't pass muster for the planning board, if it doesn't pass muster for our regulations, how can it be that it comes before the town council tonight? It should go back to the planning board. It shouldn't come before the town council unless it's approved by the planning board. I don't know what's going to happen this evening, but if this moves forward and gets approved, if this isn't an example of a potential rubber stamp by the town council, I don't know what is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Van.
This point in time, I close the public hearing and go to Agenda Item 6A, Request and Communication, Strategic Transportation Prioritization, my favorite subject, SPOT 5.0, Kendra Parrish.
Good evening. I wanted to, under request for communications, update you with where we're at with the prioritization of transportation projects on a regional level. I can take a moment just to kind of back up and explain how we get to this process. So, DOT, our North Carolina Department of Transportation, under the federal guidelines, we have strategic planning processes, and it's the DOT Division and the Metropolitan Planning Organizations across the state get together and get lists together for pedestrian, bicycle, and roadway projects, also transit, and even aviation and ferry. They're all funded under DOT's process. So, over, actually, it started, I've got a schedule here. We started the summer of 16. It was submitted projects. So, here at Holly Springs, the projects that we submit are projects from our comprehensive transportation plan and our sidewalk CIP. And we forward those on, as does all other municipalities. And they all go into a prioritization matrix. They're scored, and then there are subcommittees that look at these projects and get sort of the draft list of that. This past summer, the projects were tested within the software, and preliminary scores were assigned. March of 2018, here in a few months, the top-scoring projects will be evaluated at the state level. So, DOT looks at it across the state. They look at statewide funding, regional funding, and what they call division funding. And they start to allocate schedules and funding. Then it comes back to the planning organization in 2018, and local priorities will be assigned. January of 2019 is when we'll have the draft TIP, and July of 19 is when the final TIP for the state of North Carolina is issued. And that's a period of time, they always do the transportation improvement list, they're 10 years. The first five years are solid and funded. The back five, every two years are reevaluated. Under the federal law, you have to go back into this plan every four years. Our state does it every two years because of the funding and making sure that we're So, what I wanted to highlight, the member agencies, so the folks that we are competing with within our planning organization, this is the organization that, I'm the vice chair of the TCC, our mayor's the chair of the director's board, these are all the municipalities. So, it's basically everybody in Wake County, all the municipalities, and then we actually, our group reaches beyond the county. Andrew, Archer Lodge, Bun, Clayton, Creedmore, Franklinton, you'll see some of these folks are on the outer skirts of Wake County. We have RTP, Go Raleigh, Go Kerry, Go Triangle, RDU, NC State, Federal Highway, and the Turnpike Authority. So, this is the group that all are submitting their projects, and they go into this preliminary list, that preliminary list then goes up to the statewide, and then it comes back down with the approved projects. So, what I was talking about is for the TIP for roadway, and that's where our municipality, we are in between high-growth areas to the south and employment centers to the north. We do become victim of the bypass and the congestion that is on the bypass, and the bypass is in a category that can receive regional funding. So, what we've been pushing in the subcommittees is to get the bypass six-laned. Now, again, we're competing with several of the other, we call them shielded roads, I-85, I-95, NC-55, NC-54, all of those big type roads. We finally have made the list. So, there's 25 projects that are on the list right now that will be forwarded to DOT. DOT will not pick all 25 of these. There's not enough funding. But they will look at these 25 projects, and there will be a subset that becomes part of the TIP. So, this is making the preliminary list, if you will, and this is a really big deal because it's out of all these municipalities and counties, there's only 25 projects that made this list. What we have, we have four projects out of the 25 that are listed. Six-laning the bypass from North Main, that's up at, like, Technology Drive, north of our town limits. All the way south, it doesn't go quite to Wade-Nash in Fuquay's jurisdiction, but it goes about to Wade-Nash right there. We actually, Sunset Lake Road, these are difficult. Of the roads that are on the list, a lot of them are, I'm just going to read so you can kind of get the flavor of what the list is. US-1, I-87, I-40, US-401, NC-42, NC-50, NC-55 Bypass, NC-54, NC-98, US-70, NC-55 Judd Parkway. And then you get into what they call the division projects. There's only four that made it on the list. Sunset Lake Road, Pen-Ten Road, Kildare Farm Road, and Six Forks Road. This is the division pot of money, is the one that, it's all the secondary roads around the county. It's the ones that they need the most improvements. However, with the STI law that is set by our legislative body here at the state, that's the pot of money that has the least amount of funds available. By 2045, I think they're reporting there's a $1.9 billion gap in that category. That's why you see lots of municipalities starting to move towards bond projects. That's the way to get a lot of these roads funded. If your developers don't widen them, that's pretty much the way you do it. We are fortunate enough to get four-laning of Sunset Lake Road on this list. So, it's Kenmont to Holly Springs Road. We actually asked for it to go all the way to Stevenson Road, but because the 540 interchange is right there at Sunset Lake and Holly Springs Road, it scored better if you ended it at Holly Springs Road. The cost-benefit ratio shot the points up. Other projects that we have on the list are NC-55 and Holly Springs Road. There's a grade-separated interchange planned for that intersection. We've planned for it for years. It's in our comprehensive transportation plan. That's the ultimate design for that intersection, so we've gotten that interchange. At NC-55 and South Main, there's a grade-separated interchange, which would also provide pedestrian connection there in the Walmart area. Another interchange is NC-55 at Technology. Again, that's north of the town limits. We also have been, you know, here, you've heard about with our fiber project, we're looking to get all our signals coordinated on the town of Holly Springs fiber, and we've been working with DOT for, gosh, almost two years, it seems like, to get that. It's a little different. We had to go to the Attorney General's Office to get that permission. But also on the TIP list, or the strategic list that goes towards the TIP, is furthering our intelligent transportation system, so continuing to get that signal technology. And where, the direction we're going is to get all our signals tied on the fiber, and then to have engineers in-house that work for the town of Holly Springs that then operate our signal systems. And upon emergency, they can reverse flow, they can do more real-time changes to the signals. So, this will help move us in that direction. Sidewalk projects, there's 56 projects on the list. We have six of them. This is a list of Holly Springs Road from Sunset Lake Road to Lynxland. A greenway connection from Ting Park over to Holly Springs Town Center. There's a bridge in that area under the landfill, and we would want to use that area to try to get a pedestrian connection in. Avant Ferry Road from Town Hall up to Rex Hospital. Sunset Lake Road, Stevenson to Holly Springs Road. Avant Ferry Road from the first Holly Glen entrance to the second Holly Glen entrance, and then Avant Ferry Road from the second Holly Glen entrance to the Braxton entrance. We submitted, of course, a lot more than this. These are the ones that rose to the top based on the prioritization matrix. So, what does this mean for us? Again, this is just request for communications. What we'll do is, in March and April of this coming year, we'll want to do a resolution of support of these projects. I also will be putting out on social media and on our website ways that citizens and different groups can become involved and help, you know, talk to DOT. We'll try to plug folks in on how to move these projects forward. So, that'll be coming up, you know, in the first quarter of the year. And I can answer any questions. There's not any emotion, it's just information.
Do you want to explain further what a grade separation is, please?
Yes. So, grade-separated interchange is what you see where the bypass, you would not have to stop. If you were traveling north on the bypass and you wanted to get off on to Holly Springs Road, there would be a ramp exit to get onto Holly Springs Road, and Holly Springs Road will actually go up over the bypass. So, you get much more capacity because you'll have a six-lane freeway facility on the bypass, and, you know, your capacity is will go up because nobody will have to stop. It's just, the grade separated is what the ultimate design, and you get the most out of it. And those are anywhere from $16 to $25 million. That's why they're on DOT's list and not town-funded.
Any other comments or questions of Kendra?
I just had a question, Kendra, about, do any of these sidewalk projects, are they on the same road, say, like Avon Ferry, that are, you know, being looked at for possible widening? How would, if we decide, say, we get awarded something, put in a sidewalk, and then two years later, we're going to widen the street? I mean, some of these look like, are we going to lose the sidewalk? Is that wasted money, or how?
So, right now, we are looking to do Avant Ferry Road widening a little bit past Castle. And that includes sidewalk on both sides. That's an already funded project. These two sidewalks are a little bit past that.
Okay. But how about Holly Springs Road, like Sunset Lake Road to Lynxland?
So, say, say the fall of the year, we did a transportation bond, and Holly Springs Road widening from, say, Main Street to Kildare was on that list. And we started, you know, that obviously would include sidewalk. What we may could do is talk to DOT, is there a way to get whatever money they had allocated towards the sidewalk, could we build that into our project? We haven't ever had the opportunity to do that before, but it's definitely worth asking. I think trying to not waste money is a good idea.
Well, I just kind of don't want to, I mean, I would love to see these sidewalks, I really would, but I don't want to say, them to say, well, you're getting the sidewalks, we're not going to widen, or, you know, now that we're widening, you're not getting the sidewalks. So, I didn't know if that's considered.
Would it be situated far enough off the road to accommodate another lane?
We've designed a few sidewalks to do that. The one here on Main Street headed towards, like, South Main Street towards Walmart, a few years ago, we had grant money, and we put that sidewalk in, and we put it in the ultimate location so that we would not have to tear it back up. The majority of that sidewalk is fine. We did end up having to rip some of it up because at the intersection right there at Main Street Square, the laneage or the extra turn lanes was wider than what we had anticipated. So, we did have to tear some out there. So, you know, we might, would look at putting it in its ultimate location, but you do have to look at, there's increased right-of-way cost with that, grading cost and whatnot. So, I think this, not all these projects are going to get selected.
Right, right.
But the ones that do get selected, and then looking at our widening, we would try to make the best decisions to try not to, you know, get that money and put it into our project, and kind of make those decisions then.
So, based on previous history with the DOT and paying for Main Street Extension and Avon Ferry, we're looking probably at six to eight years in that range?
So, this TIP that we're coming up on, it's the 2020-2029 list. So, depending on how these projects shake out, and we see the final list in January of 19, these projects that we're talking about, some of them may would score in the first five, some of them might be in the back five. So, it is, it's projects that we're looking at over the next 10 years.
10 years, okay.
Now, what we have talked with DOT about is if we did a transportation bond and Sunset Lake Road, so say, you know, we want to go ahead and we want to widen Sunset Lake Road within the next two years. It gets on the TIP list. What we've talked with DOT about, and it's been done a couple times, is the municipality fronts the money from our bond, builds the widening for Sunset Lake Road, and then when it come, whatever year, like, say it came up in 2025 with the funding for Sunset Lake Road, in 2025, we get that money back from DOT. And then what we do with that money is then reinvest in our next improvement, so it becomes some perpetual funding there. DOT is open to that. Like I said, they've already done that with a few other municipalities before. That's what we'd be looking to do to try to get the projects sooner.
Okay. Thank you.
All good? I think we've got a good shot at most of these. That's what I think. Okay? So, let's see if we can't do a good shot. They've been very good working with us lately. All right. Thank you, Kendra.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kendra.
Jen, IM6B, Request and Communications again, the Holly Springs Farmers Market, season 11 wrap-up. That's Jessica Steiglitz.
Good evening.
Tall one.
Yes, hi.
You can bend it down even more. There you go.
Okay. So, we just wrapped up our 11th season of the Farmers Market, and we are proud to announce that we set a new attendance record with an estimate of over 21,000 attendees this year. And I just got a bunch of good news tonight, so it's a good way to start the meeting off. We have also once again been rated the number-one most celebrated farmers market in North Carolina, and we've moved up nationwide. We are now number nine nationally.
Really?
In the American Farmland Trust Farmers Market competition.
Good job.
So, because of all this good news, we have decided that once a month is not enough for the winter market. So, we are expanding. We will now be twice a month this upcoming season. The first Saturday of the month will take place outside in our usual spot, in the parking lot across the street, and then the third Saturday will take place inside the cultural center. And I'm doing my very best with marketing to make that not confusing, and these cards are in the back there, and it's all over our social media and website to help people remember where we will be on which days. So, in order to kick off our new, brand-new outdoor winter market, we are holding a Battle of the Badges Chili Cook-Off. So, the Holly Springs Fire and police departments will be facing off on November 4, and we're going to be celebrating our hometown heroes, and it will also just hopefully get a good crowd out for our inaugural outdoor market. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions or comments? Well, the comment is, great job. Questions?
Great job.
Like I said, good news. Great job, Jessica. Keep up the work.
Thanks for all your support. We appreciate it.
I thought you were going to say, you're going to do it every day, and I goes, wow. Thank you, Jessica.
We're not there yet.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jen IM7A, Public Hearing, 17 REZ03, 4801 Sunset Lake Road, Francis Track, Matt Beard.
Good evening. Okay, so before you tonight, 17 REZ03, this is a property approximately 11.47 acres, located on Sunset Lake Road at the intersection with Edwards. It's located between the Sunset Point and Tuscany subdivisions. The request is to change the zoning of the property from R-30 residential to R-10 conditional use residential. The developer has offered the following commitments. They're in your packets. If you'd like to go over them, they're all largely transportation-related, so I might ask Elizabeth to qualify them a little bit if you have questions.
Absolutely.
Want her to come up? Yeah, sure. If you'd like to come up and talk about the conditions, yeah. We can cover that in a minute. Yeah. Thank you. Going through the planning items first, we've got the future land use map that shows the property located here in red within the Northeast Gateway Land Use Plan area. This is the Northeast Gateway Land Use Plan, which qualifies the property as residential. The current zoning is R-30, as I stated. You can see around it, there's R-10 located here and in Wood Creek. We saw that the property was supported as R-10, both in the comprehensive plan and diving deeper the future land use map for the Northeast Gateway Plan. I'll bring Elizabeth up now.
Good evening, Elizabeth.
So, as you have begun to recognize, we're doing a little bit more information with rezonings as they come before you. So, I'm going to give a little bit of background information about what would be required for a project that comes forward at this site. We have existing water along Sunset Lake Road, so the site would be required to tie to that water line and utilize that existing system. The existing gravity sewer... The existing gravity sewer can be found through the Tuscany subdivision and also along the rear of the property through an outfall. The exact location of utility connections and the specific needs of this project would be determined as a development plan or subdivision plan came through at a later point. The transportation side of this project is something we've looked at very closely. The town would typically require, according to our comprehensive transportation plan and our UDO, for projects to complete improvements along their frontage. In this case, clearly Sunset Lake Road would be one and Edwards Drive would be the other road. Sunset Lake Road is shown on the comprehensive transportation plan as half of a four-lane median-divided road. It's 86-foot back-to-back on 110-foot right-of-way. The requirement would be center line to the project side, half of that cross-section, including half of the median. Edwards Drive is a road that is on our comprehensive transportation plan that roughly follows this path that connects between Sunset Lake Road and Kildare Farm Road. This road is a necessary connection because of the new interchange that will be placed with 540 at Kildare Farm Road and Holly Springs Road and needing to redirect that traffic to be able to disperse around that new interchange. This road's been on our comprehensive transportation plan for quite some time and is shown as a four-lane median-divided, a little lesser of a cross-section, 74-foot back-to-back on 100-foot right-of-way. Typically, if there is a road that is shown on the CTP and is not built, then we look at that on a kind of a case-by-case basis, but at a minimum, we're looking at the center of the road to the project side, half of that cross-section along that path. This road has not been fully designed at this point. There was a small amount of design that was done in order to establish the initial location. So as we get into the discussion of this property, it's important to point out a little bit of background information. This site was originally one larger tract of land and there was a small residual piece that was allowed to be done in a recombination plat, that's an exempt subdivision, through the register of deeds, filed and recorded with the Register of Deeds Office that reconfigured the line of the property to be what you see here today. This line is, by the applicant, is proposed to be the edge of the right-of-way. As I said, we have not approved of alignment yet, so it is staff's opinion that we do not know exactly if that's the case at this point. But the piece of property that is being rezoned is the piece that's highlighted in red. There is a lot of information about the road improvements on this or potential road improvements. The main point we want to draw your attention to is the staff, the recommended conditions from the applicant recommend that they would not do what we would typically require with the comprehensive transportation plan and the UDO. Their conditions reference doing just a portion of Edwards Drive and not providing right-of-way for the portion for the remainder. If you've got any questions of myself, I will be happy to answer those at this time. I do believe the applicant is here to also, or representative of the applicant's here to also speak.
Did you say, Elizabeth, that the staff found it does not comply? Is that correct?
Correct.
Elizabeth, is the property in the town limits or outside the town limits at present time?
It's ETJ today.
ETJ, so, okay.
Does anyone want to listen to the applicant at this point before we go any further? Bring that?
Sure.
Sure. The applicant forward, please. I know you.
That smiling face. For now. Good evening, Don.
Again, do the typical for us.
Sure. Don Mazel with Withers Ravenel, 115 McKinnon Drive in Cary. That's my business address, 500 Verveen Way. Holly Springs is my home address. Mr. Mayor, members of the board, good to see you this evening. I'm here on behalf of the Francis family, who are the property owners of the property that Elizabeth and Matt just described to you. They approached us about helping them entitle their property to get the zoning put in place to set the stage for future development. We have been going through that process with staff here for a while and certainly we're getting used to the new way of rezoning property in Holly Springs, looking at transportation issues and other conditions as we move forward. Our first step in the process was have a scoping meeting with the town staff. We did that and one of the things we learned was a project of this size, it's about 11 and 1/2 acres, zoned R10, would probably yield about 25 units. We hope we can get that many, actually, but, and that does not trigger a transportation study. So that's why there's no TIA or traffic study coming along with this rezoning. We next looked at the comprehensive land use plan and Matt went through that with you as well. It's pretty much designated as residential, medium density, not to exceed, I think, four and 1/2 units an acre or somewhere in that ballpark. R10 certainly meets that threshold and meets that litmus test. Also looked at the properties around us, to the north, Sunset Point, zone R10, single-family residential. And to the south, adjoining us is Tuscany Subdivision, zone R8, also single-family residential. So we think R10 is a good fit. I think from a technical zoning standpoint, we check all the boxes. With that said, when we started looking at conditions, the first two conditions we came up with as a result of our neighborhood meeting. We met with primarily the neighbors, some of the neighbors from Sunset Point and Tuscany, had a productive interchange, productive dialogue. The two takeaways that we heard and we were able to condition in this rezoning dealt with construction traffic, both from an infrastructure design, sorry, infrastructure-construction standpoint and from a vertical new home construction standpoint. There were concerns about construction traffic going through their neighborhood, through their streets, and we shared those concerns and have added the two conditions that the stub street, you see here on the screen where the cursor is, into Tuscany, will barricade that during all construction until towards the end of the project when the home construction is winding down. Also, instead of using Edwards Drive for the heavy equipment coming in for the infrastructure, the roads, water and sewer portion of the development, we will petition DOT and hopefully with the town's support to have a construction access directly off Sunset Lake Road. We hope that'll help address any concerns as far as construction traffic. And I've worked on a couple of projects here in town recently and we've had those conditions put in place and when enforced by both staff and the development community, it's pretty effective of keeping, keeping those neighborhoods free of construction traffic. The other two conditions, number three and number four, not as they read now, at least regarding number three, but staff suggested two additional conditions. One regarding the comprehensive transportation plan, number three, and then one regarding fees. I'm going to spend just a little bit of time on number three. My client, Mr. Charles Francis, is here this evening and he would like to address the board after I conclude my remarks about condition number three and how that, how that has come to be from our end and some comments on the town's take on condition three. Elizabeth, was your original condition that staff proposed in the, in the board packet? I'll try to give you some background on that. By the way, I would like to submit into evidence or to the record our application for rezoning, our justification statement, our neighborhood meeting report and our conditional use permit for the record. You've got it in your packet, but rather than going through all that, I'll just refer to it by reference. Basically, staff wanted the landowner at rezoning to commit to certain transportation improvements. And as Elizabeth mentioned, those transportation improvements came to include the dedication of Edwards Drive, and I've got a map on the screen here. The right-of-way needed to build Edwards Drive from its current terminus, just off of Sunset Lake Road, all the way to the eastern property line. And that will be the full 100-foot right-of-way required to build that road in the future. The problem is, from my client's standpoint, and Mr. Francis will get into this more later, is you see the property colored in the light red, the pink? That is the property subject to the rezoning tonight. However, the right-of-way, we believe, for Edwards Drive is located off the property. The Francis family owns two tracks, as Elizabeth or Matt mentioned, recombined, I think, in 2015. The subject track we're looking at tonight in red and the property that includes the Edwards Drive extension. So it's their belief that this condition should not apply to this rezoning because it's not located on the rezoning site. And again, Mr. Francis can speak more to that. So with that in mind, we arranged for condition number three to read a little bit differently than the staff's. We know that we're going to need access from Edwards Drive coming into the site to a certain point, whether it's lined up with Sunset Point or further down. We will bring two lanes of Edwards Drive down to that entry point, construct the road and dedicate that right-of-way. But we feel, and again, Mr. Francis can speak to this further, that the rest of the right-of-way needs to remain in place to be purchased or dedicated sometime in the future by others. Condition number four, that's copy verbatim from staff's request. It basically memorializes the fact that fees are due both during the development process and at final plat and at building permit time. And we acknowledge that and agree to that. So with that, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to yield the floor to Mr. Francis.
Any questions at this point?
Not at this point.
No, okay. Mr. Francis? Yeah, thank you. Please come forward and state your name and address for us, please.
Good evening, good evening to all of you. My name is Charles Francis. The address is, move that away from me a little bit. The address is 215 East North Street, Raleigh, North Carolina, 27601. That is the address of the Francis Law Firm, my law firm. I'm managing partner of the Francis Law Firm. I am here this morning as the lawyer for the applicant Florence Irving Francis to urge that you approve the rezoning without requiring the dedication of the Edwards Drive extension. I want to talk with you just briefly about my client, about the history of the property and then we'll go into why we think that's a proper outcome in this case. My client is Florence Irving Francis. She acquired title to the property in 1994. She acquired title to the property by inheritance from her father, Charles Irving Senior, who bought the property along with his wife in 1961. So this property that is the subject here, the roughly 12 acres, was originally part of a 54-acre tract, which included the Sunset Point, the land where the Sunset Point and Tuscany subdivisions are now located. Mr. Irving Senior and his wife bought that property in 1961 and it was not developed, none of it was developed, none of the 54 acres was developed at the time of his passing in 1994. His wife had passed away many years before in 1969. Upon his death, the 54-acre tract was divided roughly into thirds, about 16 to 17 acres to Vivian Irving, about 16 to 17 acres to Charles Irving Jr., and 16 to 17 acres, the two parcels that you see up before you, to Florence Irving Francis. In the early 2000s, before the Great Recession that we all lived through, Vivian Irving and Charles Irving Jr. sold their parcels to developers, hence the development of the Tuscany and Sunset Point subdivisions. Florence Irving Francis did not sell her property before we went into that market downturn. She now desires to sell that property for development. And the reason that we are appearing before you now is so that we can move that process forward in the entitlement process and at some point, put the property under contract. It is not now under contract, but my anticipation is that once you approve the rezoning, it'll be placed under contract before all of the entitlements are obtained, before subdivision and, you know, all of the rest are obtained. So, just a little bit more about the history of this. Well, actually, let me, let me, let me talk to you about it from this perspective. We believe that you should not require the dedication of Edwards Road for two reasons. One is that it is unjust, deeply unjust, and the other is that it is illegal. And I'm going to go into that in detail in just a minute. It is unjust because Mrs. Francis and her predecessor in interest, her father, have been paying taxes on this property since 1961 and received absolutely no return. As one of the counselors pointed out, it has not been in the town proper. So it's been county taxes that they've been paying, but nonetheless, they've been paying taxes for all this time. Second, it's unjust because this 21 or 22 or 23 lots that'll be on this tract will have no impact upon the traffic issues that you have here. There is simply no way to say that the small number of houses that are going to go on this track will have an impact upon the congestion that you're experiencing on Sunset Lake Road. The main reason that it's unjust is because the exaction, and it's not, and the terms are important here, it's not just compliance with the thoroughfare plan. What this is, is an exaction. And we believe an unjust and illegal taking without compensation consists of over two acres. All right, so you're talking about land that's worth, in current terms, perhaps $200,000 plus or minus. So let me go a bit, a little bit further into the history. The applicant is 92 years old, all right? She graduated from college in 1943. She earned an MBA from the University of Chicago in 1948 and spent her career in academia at ANT State University, St. Augustine's University and North Carolina State University, from which she retired in the 1980s. Because of the times, because she was in academia and because she spent a portion of her time in her career, as many women do, taking care of her children and working part-time, and, and also because of discrimination that existed at the time against women and against African-Americans, she never made more than $30,000 a year. The property that you are proposing that she give to the town of Holly Springs is worth over $200,000. And this is on a parcel that when it sells, may sell, the separate parcel, may sell for a million, a million-two, something like that. So the value that you propose to take by this dedication is way out of proportion with the value of the land itself and something that she is simply not prepared to do, given the equities of the situation. It's illegal because this is not simply compliance with a thoroughfare plan. In our analysis, this is a taking that would not be compensated and an exaction, as I've explained to Mr. Shifano. I've spoken with Ms. Goodson and staff and with Mr. Shifano on numerous occasions about this and made it clear that our legal analysis is, this is not, you know, simply a discretionary exercise of your zoning power. Rather, this would be an illegal and uncompensated taking. I sent to Mr. Shifano earlier today the letter that I proposed to put into the record tonight. And if I may hand this to your clerk, is she here?
Right here.
Okay. And I have copies for each one of you.
Can you interrupt just a second? Anybody that's standing that would like to go down to the Holman Room? It's just been revamped. We have a big TV down there. You're more than welcome to do that. Or you can remain standing if you wish. It's just downstairs, right down the bottom.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
So the second reason that you should not require the dedication of the Edwards Drive property is that, as I say in paragraph two of the letter, "The town's requirement of a dedicated right-of-way is not authorized under the statutes pertaining to subdivision regulation," and then I cite to the statute. "Pursuant to that statute, a subdivision control ordinance may provide for the orderly growth and development of the city, for the coordination of transportation networks and utilities within proposed subdivisions." And that's really the key thing here, is that this dedication is outside of the proposed subdivision that is before you tonight. "Within proposed subdivisions with existing or planned streets and highways and other public facilities." The North Carolina Court of Appeals considered this statute in Buckland versus Town of Hall River, holding that a municipality did not have authority to require a developer to pave and install curb and gutter on streets abutting the subdivision. Likewise, the town of Holly Springs does not have the authority to require the applicant to build Edwards Drive or by extension, to require her to dedicate the right-of-way to the town. With this unlawful requirement removed, Mrs. Francis is entitled to have her rezoning request approved. Under Buckland, if the town refused... Under Buckland, if the town refuses to relent in its unlawful refusal to issue such rezoning and subdivision approval, then the Superior Court is empowered to issue a writ, requiring the court to follow the law and approve the rezoning request. Furthermore, to the extent that the town purports to rely on conditional zoning is authorized in North Carolina General Statute, and then we cite the statute, such conditional zoning is limited in scope. The statute allows for development conditions that, quote, "address the impacts reasonably expected to be generated by development," thus expressly limiting a city's ability to demand contributions from a developer to an amount proportional to the impacts reasonably expected to flow from the development. Because the town's requirement of a dedicated right-of-way is not designed to address the impact caused by the subdivision at issue here, but rather is part of a general plan for improving its roads, this requirement is not authorized by statute and is exceeding the town's statutory authority. While the town attempts to justify its actions here as a reasonable exercise of its zoning authority, its actions actually amount to a taking without just compensation. An exaction or condition of development permission on the provision of improvement at the developer's expense can be used to assure the developer bears the costs for public facilities necessitated by its development. However, as the Court of Appeals explained in Batch v. Town of Chapel Hill, an exaction must have a rational nexus to the nature and impact of the development proposed. And that's what I mean about, you know, the traffic is just not being generated by these 22 or 23 lots that justify a taking of a $200,000 worth of property. A developer may not be expected to shoulder more than the proportionate share of the cost of new facilities that can be attributed to the new project. While the North Carolina Supreme Court reversed the Court of Appeals and concluded that there was a substantial evidence to support the town's denial of the subdivision's permit application in Batch, the Supreme Court did not dismiss the plaintiff's takings claim under the Fifth Amendment. As noted by the Fourth Circuit, the Supreme Court actually remanded the case for further proceedings, intending that the lower courts addressed the taking claim, not on the basis of denial of the permit, but on consideration whether planned thoroughfare through her property, with its inherent limitations and restrictions on development of the property, constituted a taking without compensation. And then we go on to point out there, if the planned thoroughfare in Batch constituted a taking, then to be sure, which, when it was a more minimal taking than this was, to be sure, this would be considered a taking. And then I say down at the bottom of the page, "As outlined above, the town is violating North Carolina and federal law in conditioning approval of the applicant's rezoning request on her dedicating her property to the town for a right-of-way not necessitated by the impacts reasonably expected to be generated by this development. Accordingly, Mrs. Francis has legal resource under North Carolina and federal law if the town insists on denying her rezoning request based on her unwillingness to dedicate or give away her property to the town without just compensation." We're optimistic that the town will see the error in its policy and the decision of the Planning Commission here. If it does not approve the rezoning request absent the unlawful condition of the required dedication of right-of-way, then we will be forced to litigate the matter. So just let me say in wrapping up, I would urge you to approve the application as it has been submitted, because we think that would be good public policy. As Mr. Mizell said, there was no opposition from the neighborhood. They came and they recognized, the people on both sides recognized that this is a reasonable use of the property. We agreed to the additional conditions that they asked for, and they realized, as one of them said, this is about the best you're going to get on this property. We are here tonight to seek, if not approval, a compromise of this situation, which I had proposed to Mr. Shifano in our conversations before. The response we got to our compromise request was the town saying, "This is what's required. You've got to give us two acres of land on an unrelated parcel." And so, again, what I'm trying to do right now is just to make our position clear that we believe that it is unjust and illegal for you to require this two-acre dedication. And so we hope that you will approve this tonight. If you choose not to approve it tonight, then what I would urge you to do is to table it so that Mr. Shifano and I can have further interactions, and so you have more time to talk with your staff and your counsel about this. If you do move forward tonight in the denial of this, as the Planning Commission then did, then we will litigate this. I have litigated personally with the state of North Carolina for nine years over the Hammocks Beach matter, and we won. And we will litigate this issue. The statute allows for attorney's fees, and I would expect that once we concluded the matter, if we were successful, and I think that we would be, the town would have to pay several hundred thousand dollars of attorney's fees. So what I would urge you in closing up here is, you know, as you may know from reading the paper, I am in a runoff race to be mayor of Raleigh. And one of the issues that I have talked about is, as good as staff is, it is so important that town councilors take the advice of staff, but then when you get to these controverted issues, you make the policy decision, all right? You wrap your brain around it and you decide what the just and fair thing to do and what the best public policy is. And so what I would urge you to do is, having heard staff's recommendation, decide that the better part of valor and the better part of public policy is to approve this and allow this very reasonable subdivision to go forward. If that is not your inclination tonight, then I would encourage you to table this matter so that we can have further communication and further discussion and then make a decision at a subsequent council meeting. Thank you for listening to me at length, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Francis? No?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Matt, you're back. At this point in time, I guess we do have one, I missed this one. We'll open a public hearing and have Courtney Patterson-Petersen? Is that you? Okay, come on down, please. Yeah, I missed it. Sorry, Matt.
Good evening. My name's Courtney Patterson. I live at 108 Evening Storm Place, Apex, North Carolina. Thank you, good evening, Mayor Sears and council members. I was here a few months ago to voice my concerns about Peterson Station and the pace of development in Holly Springs, and tonight I'm here to briefly state our concerns about the proposed development on the other side of Sunset Point, and I'm here representing the Sunset Point Homeowners Association as well. Though relieved that the Francis property will be developed into single-family homes, we are concerned with the timeline and the process of development. We hope the town council will work with the developers that will eventually be named to ensure that the construction of Peterson Station and the Francis property, as well as the portion of the Edwards extension, does not occur at the same time. We have no assurances that it will not, and are concerned that the traffic and quality and life impact of simultaneous construction on both sides of Sunset Point. We would also like to voice our support for a separate construction entrance along Sunset Lake Road as opposed to Edwards Drive, which is our only outlet. I will also use this time to reiterate the need to widen Sunset Lake Road. With this much construction approved along this key corridor, it's critical that road enhancements are made a priority. And finally, I would like to ask the town council to please work with our community and the other communities along Sunset Lake Road to revisit the Northeast Gateway Plan. We may not have been here when this plan was created more than 10 years ago, but we are here now and deserve to have our voices heard as development rises up all around us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point in time, we'll close the public hearing. Matt, again, back, please.
So as you know, as you've heard, the planning board recommended denial, 801. I think we've already heard what they talked about. Mr. Crandall went through them.
Anything else, Matt, at this point?
I had nothing else to add, no.
Nothing else? Any questions, Matt, that we haven't discussed yet?
Mm-mm.
Is that? All right, we have two motions, and who would like to start?
Well, I think before we even start, we probably need to get some counsel.
Well, I was wondering about that. Sure.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I'm not going to say that anything that you do here is going to be illegal. You have before you a legislative decision of rezoning a property. Your courts generally do not overturn your legislative actions unless you're doing it arbitrarily or capriciously, or unless you've got your vote bought for. So what it is, is this current zoning of R30, and the town's comprehensive plan through the Gateway Plan shows that residential, one to five units per acre, is that correct, Matt? Is the comp plan designation of this property?
The lowest would be two, and that's as you're getting closer into the middle of your community growth, or, I'm sorry, other way around. Two is on the outer ends, and then you're up to eight when you're on the edge of the community growth areas, up to 15 inside them.
So the comp plan says two to eight units per acre is probably suitable for this area, and part of that comp plan is the transportation improvement plan, and that shows the Edwards Drive extension through this property. And I think you've heard Mr. Francis say that the family was the developer of all the tracts of the land, or they weren't the developers, but they sold, they had, at one point, they had the entire tract, so all the tracts of the land, and eventually sold off until what's left is the hard part to develop, which is the area of the Edwards. You've also heard some testimony or some statements from Mr. Mizell and staff that an exempt recombination of land was done to avoid the area in which they thought that the road needed to go. You've heard from staff that, "We don't know where the road needs to go because it hadn't been designed yet. It may need to go on this particular tract. It may need to go on the remainder tract that was in 2015 removed from having this road." So what the comp plan with the North Carolina law requires you to do is make rezoning decisions that are in keeping with your comprehensive plans. Part of your plan includes a road, Edwards Drive, and this town was built not because on day one the town went through and built all the roads. This town was built by roads being constructed as neighborhoods and subdivisions have been done, and that's what the general statute, general statutes envision that. You know, they don't envision that, you know, in 1789, when, when was the town created, Johnny?
1877.
1877. That, in 1877, the town fathers built all the roads and then the development occurred, and so that's not. So what would happen, what's before you, I think, is a zoning consistency statement that says, "The current zoning of R30 is proper until such time as that road could be built." Now, the town can build that road, Edwards Drive, they can, believe, will have to condemn it from the landowner because we don't have a willing seller, so we would have to initiate eminent domain proceedings and construct that road. Your procedures are that you have a five-year capital improvements plan that say, "In the next five years, these are all the capital improvements we're going to do," and you update that every year. Certain road projects are on that five-year CIV. This particular one, to my knowledge, is not on that, hadn't been asked to be put on it. Nobody asked to have that put on. The landowner said, "Hey, I want to develop my land to a higher density, please put this on your capital improvements plan." So I think that's probably the first step here, to develop this tract in the more intense land use that they are requesting you to do, but it is your legislative decision, you know, you're acting as a Congress member, you know, and enacting a new law, and a new law that applies to this parcel of land to either allow or not allow the more intense use that they're requesting to be made. Legal lawsuit threats notwithstanding, you've got to make the legislative decision that the taxpayers of the Holly Springs are paying you to do and not be colored by legal threats.
John, I wanted to clarify one thing real quick. I misspoke. The general regulations for residential designated properties is two to eight, but within this specific category in the Northeast Gateway Plan, the maximum supported under the current comp plan is 4.5. The proposed would be...
R10 would be 3.2.
3.25, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions of a counselor?
And if there's a middle ground, I'm always willing to work for it. So, it was proposed out there, if there's a middle ground that gets everybody happy, I think, you know, that's always been the town's MO is to try and find a middle ground. I was not aware there was any...
I think we should look at that. I think we should look at maybe tabling this and kind of working together here to resolve that. So that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, is there something different about this that, you know, I mean, I'm fine with tabling it, but is there something different about this that there could possibly be some kind of middle ground? I mean, then in what we've done in the past?
Right. What we've done in the past is require people who own property to develop roads that are on our transportation improvement plan, and it's, there has been no, no matter of degree, you know, certainly, you know, we can't require, and the one I always use with Kendra is, we can't require a hot dog stand vendor to put up an interstate, right? I mean, if you want to put a hot dog stand somewhere and, you know, we have an interstate through your lot, that is clearly disproportionate. The closer calls are the ones where, you know, it's tough to measure that amount of proportionality. So the only difference here is that, you know, it's sort of a matter of degree. It's a smaller tract, it's people that have owned the property for a long time, it's not, you know, I won't use the name of a developer, but it's not a big developer that's doing 100, you know, 100 acres and getting $3 million out of something. So that's the distinction here, and, yeah, certainly willing to work towards amicable solution, but the manager whispered in my ear that he's concerned about precedent, and, you know, it's always, it's always important to pay attention to the precedent, you know, on...
Well, that's why I was asking, is there a reason that, you know, if it did set a precedent, is there a special reason in this? And it was two acres, is that right?
Two acres, yeah.
But we don't really...
We don't know, but that's what Mr. Francis was saying.
We don't know because we don't know where the road is.
Right.
It sounds like there's, to a certain degree, a fair amount of inflexibility as it relates to this, so if we table it, I'm not sure we won't be back at the same place, 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, whenever it comes back up. But some of this sounds almost like it's, you know, they recombine the properties and split them out, and you have to go back and just wonder, not say, but wonder, if that was done for the intent to be able to avoid having to dedicate the right-of-way. And our ordinances require that there's, the right-of-ways are there, and they're dedicated, and they pay for the road improvements. So that being said, that's what's in the rules, in the ordinance. You know, and we're hearing a lot about, "We're not building enough roads, we're not requiring developers to build enough roads," and this is one where it sort of slaps that in the face. So, that's my two cents.
Well stated. Pete, comments?
Yeah, it's using the word precedent, that's the precedent that I'm concerned about is almost a loophole in a way of avoiding responsibility of the transportation infrastructure.
Well, my two cents was, I looked at this, talked about it sometime, we have three issues. We have pass, we have deny, and we have table. We know that much. So now the question is, which of those three options are the best in this particular case? We've heard both arguments. Perhaps we should make a decision.
One question to Mr. Mizell.
One question to Mr. Mizell. I mean, have we looked at all the options? Have we looked at every option possible?
Mr. Shafano and I began that conversation, but I really don't feel that it's been fully explored. I think that the town and the property owner should be able to find some compromise here where you can preserve your right-of-way in the future without frustrating this sale right now. I really do think that we ought to talk about this for another thirty days or whatever the period of time is before your next meeting and see if we can find a compromise. Um, I don't think that you're setting the precedent because you're not going to have another situation where you've got a ninety-two-year-old property owner who's trying to sell her property before we, before we go through, uh, uh, another downturn and she not have the opportunity to realize the benefit of this investment.
But is that really relevant at the fact of her age? I mean, you know, it, it could be, that could be said for any property owner, and you used the word just then, "sell," "sale." Is there a sale pending on, on this piece of property that's predating this, this rezoning?
There's no, there's no contract in force now, but our intent is to sell the property as it moves through the entitlement process. That's the plan. I mean, what, what the property owner is trying to do, this is not her only, uh, asset, but it's her largest asset, and she wants to diversify her balance sheet for the next ten to fifteen years of her life.
And I can, that diversifying balance sheet, I can completely appreciate, um, the statement, but just trying to wrap my arms around this.
I, I think the comp, the compromise that could be explored is, is one, look, the, the, the issue with this is that the town is so far away from the construction of this thoroughfare that it's, it's not even in the CIP now, if I understood what you just said. I mean, this is way off into the future, and so the property owner on this small track, adjacent track, is being forced to bear the entire burden of the future, uh, thoroughfare that you want to build, and the town bearing none of the burden. It seems to me the better thing to do would be something along the lines of, of, of the town having a first right of refusal on the property at some point in the future, uh, and it not being developed, you know, without that. I mean, there are many compromises that could be worked out. And, and, and the only thing I would just point out is, I do think that one of the things to think about, if you're talking about, uh, uh, eventual purchase of a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand or something like that, I think in exercising your legislative authority, you ought to think about the potential cost to the town if there is litigation and you are unsuccessful. It could outweigh what we're talking about in terms of a, uh, an eventual purchase of the property.
Any response, counselor, at this point?
No. Other than, other than, I mean, I, nobody likes to be bullied, but-
Yeah, the threat of litigation should not, not impact our-
All right, any further, that impact doesn't bother me. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Francis. Any further conversation? One way or the other?
I mean, at this point, knowing what I know, but by reading this beforehand and then, you know, with some of Mr. Shafano's counsel tonight, I mean, I, I don't have any intent on, intention of voting in favor of it. I would, I would entertain denial or tabling.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I agree.
Higher table?
Yeah. I, I mean, I can, I'm sorry. I, I, you know, I really, I can appreciate, um, you know, what, um, Ms. Francis is, is trying to do and everything, but I, I just don't think, um, it's the right thing to do at this time, but again, deny or table is what I'd say.
Table. Let's see, let's see if there's another option out there. I mean, thirty days, it's only thirty days, and if not-
I'm not confident, but I'm, I'm willing to, to work towards that.
You're willing, you're table?
Yeah.
Got table, and we got flips. I mean, that's fine, we can, we can make that so.
Well, we don't need motions here then. Um, what, hold on a minute. Anything else, Matt?
We need to do anything as it relates to tabling or just let it go.
If nobody makes a motion, um-
Oh, question? So if we're tabling it, there's going to be some type of adjustments potentially, will that go back to the planning board?
Uh, I don't-
Probably recommend that.
I don't think so. I think you can recommend it.
We can recommend it, but it wouldn't ordinarily go back as far as possible.
I, I would probably recommend, if there's any adjustments, changes to what we saw tonight, that that go back to the planning board.
That may require a vote. So if you want to make a motion-
I don't know if you guys agree with that, but I think that's another set of eyes on that.
Don't have a problem with it.
Make the motion if you wish to table and, and then add that to your motion.
Sure. We'll make a, a motion to table, um, was it, uh, RE, where is it?
Seventeen RE Z zero-three.
Oh, uh, number seventeen, uh, seventeen dash RE Z zero-three, and, um, allow the applicant to, um, propose any adjustments to the planning board.
So, okay. Um, second, then?
Second?
I second, yeah.
What's been made, the second in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Thank you. Item seven B, public hearing, seventeen RE Z oh-four, two hundred and two oh-two North Main Street. Matt, you got two or three in a row here, I think.
You got it.
Wait for a minute.
All right, this one might take on a different flavor.
Go ahead.
The next rezoning in front of you is located, um, just a couple blocks north of here. Um, this is Main Street and ARP Street. This is a point five-four acre property, and the request is to rezone the property from LB Local Business to TV Town Village. The property is within our Village District Area Plan, as shown on the future land use map. And within the Village District Area Land Use Plan, it is shown as mixed use, which supports a range of different activities, including commercial. Current zoning is local business. As you see, it is right on the edge of the big hunk of property we call our Village District, where the Town Village zoning district is located. So it is essentially an expansion of that existing TV district. If you have any questions about engineering, Elizabeth can go over them. Would you like to hear engineering stuff?
Any questions for Elizabeth at this point? I think we're okay. Am I great?
All right, you're cool.
We're good.
We're comfortable on that one.
Sorry, Tom.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Yes?
No.
No? All good?
All right.
We're good.
At this point in time, we will, uh-
Planning board discussion?
Open and close a public hearing. Yeah, the vote was eight oh-one to approve. They'll open and close a public hearing because no one signed up. Is there further discussion?
That planning board had no, no other points of issues or-
No.
Than that brief little, okay.
Yeah, that, those-
Pretty straightforward. Easy peasy. Get them. All right.
A zip to motion, please. There you go. One of two.
Um, motion to accept the statement of compatibility as noted in agenda packets and summarized below as being true. The proposed zoning is consistent with the Holly Springs ten-year comprehensive growth plan.
Second.
What's been made, the second in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, thank you. Let's go to seven C, public hearing. This is-
Still got a second motion.
I'm sorry, I thought, I'm sorry, yeah.
Motion to approve zoning map change, petition seventeen RE Z oh-four, to change the zoning of point five acres from LB Local Business to TV Town Village, as submitted by Matthew Griffin.
Second. Motion made, second in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, thank you.
Excellent. Good to see more activity and development downtown.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Item seven C, public hearing, seventeen DP oh-eight, slice seventeen SEU oh-five, Devil's Ridge Golf Club. Matt, go.
So this is all of the Devil's Ridge Golf Club property. Um, the specific piece of property we'll be focusing on, um, is located here where we have sight, is the clubhouse location. The proposal does have something to do with all of the property, but the change was initiated by a change to the clubhouse. So, guess a little bit of history on it. The Devil's Ridge Golf Course was built, approved prior to the adoption of our current, current ordinance. Uh, the current ordinance states that all golf courses, uh, within the R fifteen zoning district would need to obtain a special exception use, uh, approval. That was never done, so with the expansion to the rear patio that they've brought before you, um, they were actually triggered to obtain a special exception use. Future land use map shows it as residential. Current zoning is R fifteen, as I stated. This is the actual, uh, twelve-hundred square foot patio addition, as well as a three-D rendering of what it will look like. As part of the review of the development plan, uh, we, we've asked them to update their landscape plan. The previous approved plan was, um, largely hand-drawn, and so it was, it was nice to be able to use this opportunity to catch that up. Um, it will help us greatly in, um, enforcement. And the applicant is here, if you have questions for them?
I think not, but we'll ask again. I think we're good on that.
Yep.
All right, at this point, we will, uh-
Would you-
Unless there's questions now?
Would you allow the applicant to speak?
He would allow the applicant.
Well, the applicant, for a special exception use, has to put in some evidence, so you want to open the public hearing and then-
Listen to, acquire the evidence.
We can do the public hearing first, if you'd like. We can have a person-
Do you want to do that with the public hearing, open?
I think the, the applicant will be the first part of the public hearing.
Yeah, very good. So in that case, we're going to open the public hearing. Please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Shouldn't be.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Isabel Maddox, P.O. Box nine four six Raleigh, two seven six oh-two. I'm here tonight on behalf of Devil's Ridge Golf Club. With me tonight, I have several experts. As you know, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, and we have to present evidence so that you can make ten findings under your UDO. And I have, uh, experts on several matters, and I'd like to, they've all been sworn in. I'd like for them to come forward, I'm going to call their names as they're coming. We have from Devil's Ridge Golf Club, Wes Pontius, Erin Brooks, and Jason Kobel, and our development team, Rick Baker, civil engineer, Jeff Hockenadl, traffic engineer, and Tom Hester, MAI appraiser. Most of you are familiar with the club. It's been a community asset in Holly Springs since nineteen ninety-one, and at the time it was built, there was no requirement for special exception use. But this new, small addition to the patio, twelve-hundred square feet, triggers a requirement that not only the patio, but the whole club be approved as a special exception use. The code and comprehensive plan does contemplate that country clubs and golf courses can be adjacent to residential in R fifteen zoning, and that's what is, is here in, in this case. I'm going to go through each of the findings that you have to make, and I'm going to, they'll then offer up some evidence. I've got, to try to expedite things, I've got affidavits from each of our testifiers tonight, and then I'll offer each of them up for questions that y'all might have. So, uh, the first finding is that this, this use will be good for the general wel- welfare of the club, and the expansion of the patio will not be injurious to the public health, safety, comfort, community moral standards, convenience, or general wel- welfare. Uh, and we, we believe that this club complies with the town ordinances, and it's well-maintained. It hosts many community and charity events that benefit the community. Um, our, uh, civil engineer, Rick Baker, of the Timmins Group, has executed an affidavit, which I would like to hand up as exhibit A. Uh, he testifies to the compliance with the, um, code, and we also have an affidavit from Steve Ostroff, who is the, um, club manager. Now, Steve could not be here tonight, he had some surgery today, and he thought he was going to get here, but he just can't do it, so he, in his place, uh, Erin Brooks is here, she can answer any questions about the operation of the club. Pardon?
He'd talk to me, and it's very understandable.
Um, okay.
Not a problem.
Okay. So, I, I'm going to hand up to Mr. Shafano, I guess, or, or the clerk, all the affidavits at once. Uh, the second finding is effect on neighboring properties. The pro- proposed use of the club and patio will not injure or adversely affect the adjacent area or property values. Uh, Tom Hester, who's an MAI appraiser and a North Carolina licensed appraiser and real estate broker, has, has prepared a report, um, confirming that th- this club does not and will not injure the value of adjacent properties, and we have a report that I will hand up, as, as well as Tom's affidavit. Again, he's available for any questions. All these people are also here to, to confirm the contents of their affidavit. The third finding is consistency with existing zoning and comprehensive plan. The golf course club is consistent with the character of the district, the land use is already authorized, and the comprehensive plan. Staff indicated in its staff report that was, uh, presented to the planning board, including your packet tonight, that the club is currently zoned R four, permits low-density residential, and golf courses and country clubs are expressly allowed as a special exception uses in this zoning district. The fourth finding is development standards. The use of the club and patio is and will conform to all development standards of the zoning district. The club was constructed in accordance with the development code and effect of the time of construction, uh, and the, the new patio will certainly comply with the code requirements. Mr. Baker confirms compliance with these, uh, standards in his affidavit that we, we've already referred to. He is here to answer any questions. The fifth finding is traffic. Uh, access drives will be sufficient to ensure automotive and pedestrian safety, convenience, and traffic flow as set forth in section seven oh-nine, seven point oh-nine pedestrian circulation and vehicular area design. We submit as exhibit C, an affidavit and trip generation analysis, uh, from Jeff Hockenadl, who, professional transportation engineer for the Timmins Group, testing to the fact that there should be no additional material traffic from the expansion of the patio, and that the club as a whole is, uh, is not generate a lot of traffic itself, and, and the, the nearby roads adequately handle that traffic. And Mr. Hockenadl, I'll hand his affidavit up shortly. He, he's here to confirm compliance and to ask, answer any questions. Uh, sixth finding is parking and other services. Off-street parking areas, loading areas, trash pickup and removal are located to be safe, convenient, and allow for access in case of emergency. Uh, the club will continue to use parking services and trash services in the manner they've been using, and the expansion will not change this. Uh, Mr. Ostroff in his affidavit confirms compliance in these matters, uh, and we will hand his up as exhibit D. Again, Erin Brooks is here to confirm the contents of that affidavit and also to answer any questions. The finding number seven is facilities in the club building, the existing structure of the club operates, the structure, the structure the club operates, has adequate restroom and facilities to provide needs for those persons working and visiting. Uh, the current club is in compliance with all regulations and inspections. The, those services will not be changed because of the expansion. They're all in, in compliance with all health regulations, which is confirmed by Mr. Ostroff in his affidavit. Public services, utilities, schools, fire, police, and other necessary public, private facilities and services will be adequate to handle the existing use of the club and the expansion of the patio. Uh, we believe the adequate fire and police services are and have been available to the town and serve the needs of the club. Uh, we don't believe the expansion will have any effect on, we don't have, think the school, I mean, the club or the expansion has any effect on schools, and we have, uh, Mr. Af- Mr. Baker in his affidavit confirms this. A finding number nine is buffers and effect on neighboring property. The location and arrangement of the use at the club harmonizes with adjoining properties in the general area. Club is landscaped and maintained in a way that prevents any negative impact to, in the surrounding area. The majority of property is zoned as medium-density residential- The majority of property is zoned as medium density residential. We think the landscaping appearance of the club actually provided benefit to the surrounding neighborhoods. And the proposed expansion will not cause any new negative effects to surrounding property. Both Mr. Baker's affidavit and Mr. Hester's affidavit confirm these matters. Number 10, and I know you'll be happy, the final finding, hours of operation, type, size, and intensity of the proposed use, including such considerations as the hours of operation, numbers of people who are likely to utilize or be attracted to the use, will not have significant adverse impacts on adjoining properties of the neighborhood. The club has operated well for many years with no negative effects. Hours of operations are not expected to change with the expansion of the patio. There are several special events a year, maybe six, that do have sort of an overflow of crowd, but for the most part, they're closing up at nine or 10 at night. Mr. Ostroff, again, has confirmed these details in his affidavit. And so with that, I'm going to hand up these affidavits, including the...
...the appraisal report of the pressure and transportation study contract.
Feel like we comply with these findings, and request that you approve this tonight. Thank you.
Do you have any questions or comments at this point?
Not at this point.
I think we're good. Thank you very much. Tom Hester? Tom Hester here? There he is, sir.
He's just one of his witnesses.
I'm sorry?
He was signed up over here, so that was...
Okay. You have anything, Dad?
His affidavit.
Okay. Thank you. I think there was one more.
There shouldn't be two more.
Ryan Griffith? That same story or something different? Something different. All right. Please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Ryan Griffith. I live at 4804 Sunset Forest Circle. So I am one of the few residents who actually has an adjoining property line with this location. I brought a map if anybody needs it. So I apologize. Hopefully, my phone doesn't die. I came straight here from the fair. So I just want to start with the fact that I think it's important to note that this club is a private club, as well as it is held by an out-of-state entity. So with that, you know, we have an outside company who's willing to put money into our club. And as it was noted, that this is designed to improve our property values. And being a direct neighbor, you know, I feel it's important to do that. It was mentioned about the bringing additional people into the club, you know, that this would not impact that. I believe, and someone from the club can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the membership is capped. So even if this expansion and if this special exemption goes on, you know, it is capped by our bylaws, and that should not change anything. And, you know, when this was established 20 years, 20-plus years ago, as it said, it was not contemplated at this time. But when this happened, people that were coming to this area, you know, from the neighboring towns to Holly Springs, which really had nothing at the time, you know, they came here for this sense of community, and it was families coming in with children. Fast forward 20 years later, there's a huge upturn in the neighborhood. So this is important to keep the momentum going of bringing in more families, bringing in, you know, children. I'm impartial because I have a six and a seven-year-old. We are golf members. My six-year-old has a better handicap than I do, but, you know, we're also social members. We're up there at the club two to three times a week. We're there almost every single Friday for the use of kids' club. That's my wife and I's break. So with this expansion, you know, this extension needs, is riding on this exemption use, this is helping us because the club has had a growth. We're not at that cap, but we have had a growth, and we're kind of running out of room. So I think that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. The last person on here is William Skirball, but I have a problem here. He signed no on swearing in?
I was sworn in.
I'm sorry?
I had been sworn in.
You had been sworn in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you hit no. That's why I asked the question.
No.
Okay, I'll trust you on that. Would you please come forward?
Yeah.
And again, name and address.
William Skirball, 4800 Sunset Forest Circle. I'm one of the other adjacent properties back behind Devil's Ridge Golf Club. Scroll, all right. Little bit of background about myself. I've been a resident of Holly Springs for 17 and a half-plus years. This is my second house purchase in Sunset Ridge. My first was in 1995 at 5024 Sunset Fairways Drive. I purchased 4800 Sunset Forest Circle in 2006, the adjacent property to the clubhouse. I'm a member of the golf club, a full member of the golf club, for approximately 17-plus years. I'm a two-time senior club champion at the club currently. I've also served on the Board of Governors, and I've also was a member of the golf committee for many years, so I'm very familiar with the operations and procedures that go on at Devil's Ridge Golf Club. Here are my fact challenges that I'd like to share tonight. I have concerns about noise. I've got concern about parking. I've got concern about the effects of homeowner value in close proximity to Devil's Ridge So let's talk about noise. Club staff has testified, or somebody has testified, that it will not cause any material adverse effects to the, on the neighborhood. And this is a recent report, a call report, incident report from the Holly Springs Police Department, where a officer was dispatched as a result of a loudspeaker being used on a Monday evening around eight o'clock in the evening, raffling off liquor products and other stuff. And the volume that was emitting from that location was going down the hill and throughout the neighborhood. Once the officer was on site, the noise, what he thought was rather excessive, he took it upon himself to go up and confront the general manager at that time with Steve Ostroff, who was on site and present at the time and turned down the music and the loudspeaker. This goes on all the time because they have groups coming in from outside sources, and there's always noise in the back. So noise is a concern, very big concern. The proposed patio also includes a bar expansion. You have to kind of take a look at the proposed plan, a very nice plan that was put together here. And you can see where there's an existing bar within the confines of the building itself. There's a halfway house where you can buy beer as you're making a turn at the golf course. And now there's this new proposed bar. Well, actually, it's part of the 1,200 square foot expansion, but you have to look very closely at the seating arrangements up in the upper right-hand corner, where it denotes that there's bar seats, 11 of them, going to be located at an outside bar, outside the confines of the building itself, exposed outside. If you're not familiar with what it looks like, I attempted to take a picture at the top, which is as you approach the building. The red circle indicates where the new proposed expansion's going with the bar. The lower left-hand corner is a door where you would enter into the building itself, and you would step into the bar itself. Where the proposed bar is being, going to be added on this expansion, is at that brick wall, literally eight feet from an existing bar. Eight feet inside a door, eight feet. The other building on the right is the halfway house where also beer can be sold. So my question is, what's the real reason why to build another bar outside an existing, an existing one literally eight feet inside a controlled, secured environment? What is the real reason? Let's talk about parking. All right. It's indicated by the experts that there's going to be no effect on regard to traffic and emergency vehicles, and that off-street parking, in which there is none, is adequate. I can challenge, I'd like to challenge that. This is their diagram on the proposed plan and the definition of what they consider the parking spaces around the facility, and they say it's adequate. I've taken the liberty of circling and highlighting, but I'm going to blow that up for you so you can actually see, because it's very hard to read. You really have to look close. All right. So you have this summary data table, which was circled in red, and it indicates there's an existing 132 spaces for this facility currently, and that their recommendation is no additional spaces are going to be required or proposed at this time. So the total number of parking spaces down at the bottom, the blue area, is 100, the entire space needs 123 spaces, and of 132. However, my comments to the left, the real number of the parking spaces available are five spaces less. There are 127. Why is that? Due to the fact that four spaces are taken up by current club champions, one space is taken up by sponsor of the year. Now reduce the number by four for the handicap parking allocation, and the real total number of spaces comes to 123. The club will be literally at the maximum number of spaces allowed for that size building in that location. That's it. There's 123 actual spaces. So let's take a look at the no parking, the situation at Lynxland, Sunset Forest Circle, and Lefoy. And where I've got red squares, that indicates on Lefoy where there are currently no parking signs posted. So no parking is allowed on that street at any time, from corner to corner, from stop sign to stop sign. And obviously, you can't park on Lynxland in front of the building. The proposed outside bar here is literally, from the distance from my property to that bar, per my rangefinder, is 123 yards. So this is very close. This is in proximity, very, very close. So now, I've got some pictures that were taken on September 27, 2017, at 10:21 p.m. or AM, when there was an event being held at Devil's Ridge Golf Club. And as you can see, there are clearly no parking signs up in the upper left-hand corner posted all along that street on Lefoy. And you'll see down the lower left, well within 15 feet of the intersection of Lynxland and Lefoy, a car parked there. So if somebody's making a right turn off of Lynxland onto Lefoy, is going to come around that corner and literally rear-end this car, it's illegally parked right now. There are other cars in the center that are parked in both directions within the no parking zone. And it's clearly, you can clearly see that they park it willy-nilly, whatever way they want to go, right down the, that would be the south side of the street. The far-right photograph is when conflicting traffic comes down that street with people illegally parked on the north side of that, or the south side of that street, where the street literally becomes impassable, either going towards Lynxland or going towards Sunset Forest Circle. And again, once the parking lot is full at Devil's Ridge, of the 123 actual parking spots that they have, people just park randomly wherever they want. They fill up the parking lot, they'll find a spot. That's the picture that you see on the left here, where the allocated spaces are already taken, and these people are just parking out by the kitchen and by the dumpsters. So what happens is, the rest of the cars come into the parking lot, and they start parking out on the street on Lefoy. Hence, the car is parked in both directions with no parking zones, and no parking zones denoted. So when you, when, this is from the Town Services, rules about off-street parking. Off-street parking is not allowed, period. So basically, what I've highlighted here and paraphrased, don't park your vehicles opposite on the street, don't block the traffic signs, and don't park within 15 feet of the intersection, which everything that you can see from the pictures I provide you violates that today. Then there's the Town Code of Public Safety, which indicates with the rule of evidence for no parking, and I'm not going to bore you with Section 12 dot 4 dot 461, 462, which basically says, don't park in no parking zones unless it's an emergency. And in this case, if you're late for a tee time, park wherever you want. Right? Wrong. So as a reminder, when you look at this schematic, all the red squares indicate that these are no parking signs going straight down Lefoy. So my summary, fact, illegal parking on Lefoy generally occurs during outside events and sold to outside organizations. Another fact, Devil's Ridge Golf Club rents the clubhouse course to outside organizations on a weekly basis, and sometimes more than once a week for profit. Fact, a 25-year-old, your resident, residential environment will be changed drastically with the additional noise from the proposed outside patio bar expansion. Fact, noise complaints have been filed in the past with the Holly Springs Police Department, and valuable city resources had to be diverted and intervened. And believe me, this is probably going to continue on with many of my neighbors that are sitting in the audience here today. Fact, making assumptions that homeowners' property values could benefit is misleading and cannot be qualified and quantified, excuse me, quantified. Therefore, at the end of this, I'm asking you not to approve the variance, decline the issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. At this point in time, a closed public hearing? Of course. We're very firm but flexible. We're firm but flexible.
To address Mr. Skirball's comments, I do want to bring some of my folks up here. I'd like Erin Brooks to come forward. She's the membership director, and she's been employed by this club for several years and is pretty involved on a day-to-day basis. Come forward, and I'll stand beside you. I just want to ask you a couple of questions.
Can you say my name and address?
Yes.
Close her, please.
Sorry. I'm Erin Brooks, 249 Springside Drive here in Holly Springs.
Okay, on the parking, when you designate a space for a club champion, doesn't that just mean that that person can get a better space?
Correct.
Somebody who is going to be there anyway?
Correct.
Okay. As far as the big events, can you tell about how often those occur?
We have about six a year, I would say half a dozen. They are large charitable events you're going to have here in the three years I've been here. Times I know that the staff has been addressed to park across the street, or when we've notified the police that we are going to have larger events are going to be, you know, Meg Smiles, our Pretty in Pink tournament, our charity classic event, which those photos were from, which supports Alzheimer's, and they raise about $40,000 a year. So we're talking about $150,000 worth, if not more, of charitable money that those outings make.
Are you aware of accidents, people running into cars on the streets?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. As to noise, have you been aware of any complaints filed with the police?
We were only aware of that one that was filed last Monday.
And you know who filed that?
Mr. Skirball's wife, I believe.
Okay. So that's the only noise complaint that you're aware of?
Correct. And that, again, that occurred around 8:00 p.m. prior to noise ordinances being enforced.
Are you familiar at the club with those noise ordinances?
Yes, we are, because we try to comply. We always comply with those.
Okay. And thank you very much. And then on values, Mr. Hester, can you come forward? And then on values, Mr. Hester, can you come forward?
Please give your name and address.
My name's Tom Hester. My office is 228 Fayette Street in Raleigh, 27601.
And Mr. Hester, can you just state your qualifications?
Yeah, I'm a state certified general appraiser in North Carolina. I have the MAI designation from the Appraisal Institute and I'm also regulated by the State Real Estate Commission with a broker's license. I've been appraising property in Wake County for about 35 years.
Can you tell us your opinion of the impact on the club to adjacent residential?
Yeah, I'll just be very brief and my conclusion, I'll tell you first, is that the club is not having any negative effect on the adjacent property values. Usually when I do this kind of analysis, I'm looking at a proposed use. So I go find a situation where an existing club is surrounded by residential properties. In this case, this is an existing club, so I can look at this exact subdivision. And I've sort of looked at it three different ways. I've looked at properties within the subdivision that surround the club, compared those to properties in other subdivisions nearby that are very similar, and I find no diminution in value in the subdivision that surrounds the club by being adjacent to the club. I've also looked at within the subdivision, the properties that are adjacent to the golf course, that the lots front the golf course versus other properties in the same subdivision that don't front on the golf course. And you might guess, and you'll be correct, that the properties that are on the golf course sell for a little bit higher. That's as you could be, as you would expect, I think. And that leads me to believe that even on the golf course adjacent to the club is not a negative. I've also looked at other recreation facilities, swim club, tennis clubs, and looked at residential properties adjacent to those clubhouses. I've come with the same conclusion, that being immediately adjacent to the clubhouse does not result in any less value or less sales price. So looking at the properties, those three different ways, it's my conclusion that this existing use is not having a negative effect on the nearby residential properties. The proposed expansion is very minor and to me is not going to change the operation of the club. My conclusion also that will not have a negative effect on properties nearby.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything to add, Matt, at this point?
I do not.
Conversation, questions, comments? Are we all set to go one way or the other?
I was just, I was just wondering, I don't get out back there, do they right now play music out back? Is there other speakers out back where music? Because I saw some chairs out there.
Special occasions. Right.
Okay. But there'll be no added speakers or anything as far as that type of noise? Okay. So the concern's probably more with the?
Traffic.
People and the noise from people in the truck. I'm sorry, I was just asking her where, about if there's going to be any additional speakers or anything like that put out. So what I'm trying to get at is your concern for noise related to just the people and the speaking.
Can I press something?
No. No, I was just, I was just.
Way beyond that.
Yeah, I was just asking to see about the music.
With all due respect.
About the speakers.
There is a TV.
Right. And I, yeah.
They're proposing additional TVs to create a support bar environment. Support bar.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
That's it?
Seeing none? Who wants to tackle?
I'll make the motion to make and accept the findings of fact for special exception use petition 17 SEU-05 for Devil's Ridge Golf Club to allow for a golf course in the R-15 Residential District as submitted by Wes Pontius.
Second? Motion made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, number two.
Having made the necessary findings of the fact, motion to approve special exception use number 17-seu-05 to allow for a golf course in the R-15 Residential District and Development Plan number 17-dp-08 for Devil's Ridge Golf Club as presented with the conditions detailed in the agenda packets.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay. We'll wait for a second.
Didn't like that one. This is not a parking thing.
I didn't want to, I couldn't say that.
Yeah, he doesn't want.
Why not?
He has, he has what we did.
Mm-hmm.
There he is.
Always has been.
Always will be.
Yeah.
Right.
I understand that.
Okay. Item 7D, public hearing, Town Hall Commons, public parking and infrastructure with a lot of stuff after it. Sean.
All right. Good evening, everybody.
Evening, Sean.
This item is for a few special exception uses, variances, and associated waivers. This is the first component of the master plan that was approved last month by the Town Council for the Town Hall Commons project. And this is the public component of that project. The private component will come within the next few months. But really, the primary focus of this portion of the project is two special exception uses. One, to allow for a new project in the TV Town Village District. And the second special exception use is to allow for a parking garage in the TV Town Village District. And parking garage is a pretty general term. In reality, this is a two-level tabletop parking deck. But just to briefly discuss again the reasons for this project, the Town, or the Village District Area Plan first adopted back in 2005 really laid out the general vision for the future development of the downtown area. So you have Main Street that comes down the center of this concept graphic here, Valentine Street across the middle, here's Town Hall just for reference. And so really, the focus area of this project is this area, south of Valentine Street and west of South Main Street, so this general area here. The Village District Area Plan contemplated that the town should focus on both the public and private investments. And so this is the public component of what will be a public and private partnership. It is a catalyst project that is designed to support these private investments primarily through infrastructure improvements as well as parking improvements. And since this is our core area, this is where we are focusing that investment. And just some of the concepts that went into this project, in particular, the design of the tabletop parking deck, improving street grids, having on-street parking next to places where businesses will be located, as well as increasing the pedestrian connections in our downtown area. So as I said, the primary purpose of this development plan is really to do two things, to establish the public infrastructure and establish the parking that will be used by the future commercial users as part of this project. So just to orient you, this is South Main Street going up and down the screen here. This is the existing West Valentine Street, Avant Ferry Road under my mouse along the west here. And then this is the future proposed West Rogers Street that would come from the existing Rogers Street across to Avant Ferry Road in this location. So west of Avant Ferry Road is a proposal for 58 surface parking spaces located in green here. Along the public streets, the addition of 64 on-street public parking spaces scattered around the development area, as well as new ones across from the church on West Rogers Street. And then a two-level tabletop parking deck with 107 parking spaces on the lower portion of the deck, some surface parking, and 100 parking spaces on the top level of the deck. So total added parking spaces to our downtown area would be 329. So as it relates to the tabletop parking deck, there are two variance requests that go along with this. There was a third variance request that was thought to be needed. That one was withdrawn. So if there's anybody here in the audience that is wondering where that application is and as far as this presentation is not included because that was withdrawn, that was 17 VARTC07. But in terms of the setback request variances tonight, we do have a minimum building setback of five feet along all public street frontages. So you have West Valentine Street, Avant Ferry Road, and West Rogers Street. This yellow line represents that five-foot minimum setback. We have a 15-foot maximum building setback and this green line represents what that maximum building setback should be. As you can see, the parking deck goes over that five-foot line right to the right-of-way. So the request in this case, 17 VARTC04, is to allow for a reduction in the minimum setback along Avant Ferry Road from the required five feet to zero feet. And as you can see along West Rogers Street, the structure is quite a ways back from the road in order to allow for the ramp to the upper level of this tabletop parking deck. So the variance request is to increase that maximum setback from 15 feet, which is the green line, to 120 feet. This is the proposed landscaping plan for the project. Proposed landscaping includes parking area landscaping in the middle of all of our parking lots, foundation area landscaping around the foundation of the parking structure, parking area screening along the face of all parking spaces that face residential properties or right-of-ways, as well as street trees along all public streets. It also includes several public improvements to the streetscape, including the stone columns that we have scattered throughout the Village District, decorative crossing treatments, decorative street lighting and parking lot lighting, decorative street furniture benches and trash cans, as well as the addition of street trees. These are the proposed elevations for the parking structure. Really, our goal with the parking structure was to make it look a little bit, enhance it so it doesn't just look like concrete columns. And we really tried to mimic the design of traditional retail with the repetition of the building bays as well as decorative elements. So this is the elevation that would face Avant Ferry Road, and I'll show you a zoom-in on the next slide. West Rogers Street facing elevation where the entrance to the lower level, the parking deck, would be. This is the proposed West Valentine Street elevation. And as you can see, there's pedestrian entrances at the corner of West Valentine and Avant Ferry Road. And this is what it would look like from the back of the structure which would face the future adjacent building. So as you can see with the zoom-in of the elevations, includes brick primarily as well as a synthetic stone for the base. And this really helps to tie the structure into the existing architectural elements of Town Hall. In place of what would traditionally be windows in a retail building, you have openings for the parking structure, but filling in some of those openings with a grid-type pattern to mimic the appearance of windows, decorative brick insets to break up the color of the brick and create that human scale, as well as decorative awnings over the vehicular and pedestrian entrances. There is an additional variance request that goes along with the building height. Typically, we require a two-story, 25-foot-tall building. However, this parking deck is proposed at 16 feet 10 inches, so that is a request to decrease the minimum building height. And then there are two waiver requests. One is to allow for a reduction in the amount of windows and glass doors from 40% to 0% on the lower level and from 15% to 0% on the upper level. And that just relates to the use of the structure as a parking facility, as well as a waiver to reduce the minimum building cap from 7 to 3.46%. And the building cap here is featured with a concrete band and a brick banding along the top. With that, I'm going to invite Elizabeth up to talk about some of the other infrastructure improvements that will go along with this project.
Much of what we would point out in this presentation will be things that you have heard in the master plan discussion, but since this is the plan that is showing the utilities and roadway improvements, I want to walk through those items again. With this project, we are looking at water line, the water service being available to this through some existing lines as well as some new lines. So the existing lines are along Valentine Street, North Main, and Avant Ferry. The new line will be along Rogers Street, West Rogers Street here, and there will be a realignment as a part of the realignment of the existing Rogers Street. With this project also, there is going to be a re, an upgrade of the existing line on Avant Ferry. It's an old AC material line that will be upgraded as a part of this project. The sewer is also available on-site with an existing eight-inch line that is along West Valentine. There's also one along the Rogers Street right-of-way. It was an existing line there before the road will be built. And similarly, along Avant Ferry Road, there are some upgrades being made to the existing sewer line to relocate it to be out of conflict with the road improvements. There was a traffic study that was completed for this project. It was completed as a part of the master plan. It is one the town has undertaken on behalf of this whole master plan and included both the future project that will have a building in this location and one on this block. The road widening associated with this and road improvements include improving Avant Ferry Road, existing two-lane cross-section, but we are adding curb and gutter and diagonal parking. It's one side, it alternates. It's on the east side for this block and it switches to the west side for this block. The existing Rogers Street will be realigned to provide a safer intersection with the new Rogers Street that will be extended. The West Valentine Street will include some improvements. It'll be converted to one-way going, make sure I point correctly, coming from the Cultural Center up to Main Street. This will also be one-way for Rogers Street coming from the churches over from Main Street to Avant Ferry. As a part of this project, there is a new street that is in conformance with what our VDP has shared for many years, that we wanted to provide a better grid system that also included, as I mentioned, this realignment of Rogers Street and the removal of Raleigh Street for this block. This is an area that currently is a, multiple intersections coming together in an awkward way, and this plan will provide that correction to that intersection. Upon successful approval of this plan tonight, the next step for the removal of this road is a separate process and it will come back to you likely at the next meeting to start that process. It's a multi-week, multi-step process that will begin at that stage. Make sure I did not miss any of the roads. The part on Main Street there is minimal changes to that because the curb line already was existing at the appropriate width. The environmental requirements of this site are very consistent with our NPDS Phase II post-construction stormwater ordinance and include a stormwater control measure that will be located in this location. If there's other questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions of Elizabeth? None? Think we're good? Thank you. Anything else before we open? Okay. At this point in time, we're going to open a public hearing and I'm going to ask Christine You know the drill. Please.
Hi, I'm Christine Kelly. I live at 201 Grigsby Avenue, Holly Springs. I have some things that I want to talk about and I'm looking at the clock because I'm sure that I'll only have three minutes, even though other people have had way more time. I did receive the six notices in the mail and thought that each variance in?
You have more than three minutes.
I have more than three minutes this time?
But not an hour.
Not now?
Not an hour.
Not an hour.
Yeah, it's public hearing.
All right.
Trying to be a little facetious there.
What I'd like to talk about are, this project has been fast-tracked as far as I'm concerned and I've got some information to show. and I've got some information to show why that's the case. And because of that, I have been, Joanie's been great about sharing information with me, there is a code of ethics conduct for town officials that I've been going through. And I've actually signed this because in here in the bottom, it says, if you're a candidate for a position on Holly Springs Town Council, that you could sign it. So this is signed, and I'm adhering to all of these code of ethics standards. Part of this, it talks about the definitions of ethics, and it talks about the policy statement is around building trust, the purpose of the town government is to serve the public. Town officials treat their positions as public trust, and they respect town facilities, property, equipment, and personnel as part of the public trust. It also talks about objectivity, that town officials base their decisions on merits of the issue. Judgment is independent and objective. It also talks about leadership, that town officials are supposed to lead by example. And it talks about that if there, if somebody has a violation, to go ahead and submit a complaint, which is what I'm doing right now. And my complaint actually contains several town council members, the mayor, and the town attorney. So it says from this process that I should submit my complaint to the town manager, which I will do. So this is the policies and procedures here. This is my formal complaint that I'd like to put forward, and this is based on a narrative that the town is going through to state that this plan has been in process since 2005, and yet the village plan has been updated. And I've gone through line by line to show that that's hardly, there's hardly been any modifications to the village district's plan over the four times. From the first version to the next version, they changed some maps. From this version to the next version, they added some skate-street stuff, benches, garbage cans, and then from this version to the last version, they took out some maps. So this particular plan has hardly been touched since 2005. I think you can all admit that a lot has happened since 2005 in our town. So the narrative has always been, and I hear, and even the town attorney told me, the town staff has made up their minds about this project, and so have many of the town council...
No, 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 no. I'm sorry. You cannot, first off, you're making an ethics complaint against myself and members here.
Yes, I am.
So what is the ethical violation that you're alleging?
Okay.
And I will be, I will caution you to be careful because...
Sworn testimony.
One, it's sworn testimony.
Correct.
Two, it could be defamation.
I understand.
So go ahead.
I understand.
And you have no immunity against this defamation, if, in fact, it's defamation. So go ahead. What is your ethical complaint against the members of this board?
Okay. I have on here listed by the trust violations, several of them for Dick Sears, violation underneath this group for E, F, G, H, I, J, N, and P, for Hank Dixon, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, N, and P, and for John Chafano, D, E, F, G, H, J, O, P. For objectivity violations, I have Dick Sears for A, B, C, D, Hank Dixon...
No, no, no. What are the facts that you are alleging are ethical violations?
Okay. On this particular group here, can I, can I go through the statutes I'm also using to help support that?
No, you, I think, I think if you are alleging ethical violations of this board, you need to allege some facts.
Okay.
You cannot make conclusory statements.
I have them here, which is all...
So let's, let's hear what they are.
Just, just so you know, every time I seem to bring up something, I've been threatened about being charged. I have not been given, I've asked for Freedom of Information Act, I haven't been given the information all clearly. So some of the things that I am observing, and this is from the, I need to reference here, my policies.
Yeah. It, this is actually out of order, Your Honor, Mr. Mayor. You know, it, it probably ought to be a separate agenda item for the allegations of ethical complaints.
I was, I was...
Well, let me...
It doesn't really have anything to do with a public hearing.
Yes, because can I say at the very end, because if you look at my, my different, and I'm happy to show you the facts, per the Chapter Seven Ethics and Conflicts of Interest from the County and Municipal Government of North Carolina Manual, which has been given by the UNC Chapel Hill School of Government on page 118, it says that "The standards is as follows: A board member shall not participate or vote if the member has a fixed opinion, not susceptible to change prior to the hearing; undisclosed ex parte communication; enclosed familial business or other association relationship with the affected person." What this particular complaint goes through is that the examples in emails that I've received from the town, town officials, and that this project has been moving forward very quickly, and, and things that people have said verbally about if, that I'm trying to stop something that the town just has to do. General statute 16A 400.24 talks about public hearings. I believe that the public hearing processes are not being followed closely. There were no public hearing signs at all near the properties along Raleigh Street that, that you know are trying to close. General statute 16A 425, what development agreement must provide...
There's no development agreement in this, in this particular...
All right, then I'll skip to the next one.
And, and please...
The village district area plan...
Please supply some sort of facts...
Okay.
For this ethical violation.
All right, well, there are, I presented before in public...
Or I'll give you the opportunity to recant your allegation of ethics violations to this board, if you cannot come with any facts of ethical violations.
Okay. I don't have intentions to recant right now. What I have are examples of public Facebook pages that the town officials are using their IDs on, that are, that are sounding like the folks running are trying to close development. They are saying misstatements about our position that aren't true, and that the several councilmen are liking them. So they are watching some sites that are posting information that's erroneous about me, myself, my position, and when people are actually saying things to correct, they're being taken down. One of them is the Citizens for Responsible Truth, which all of these, Hank, Dick, and Jimmy have all liked, different areas on it, so we know that they're being followed. In some September 7th email, Hank, when I was asking information about the, how about Raleigh Street being closed, Hank was not sharing this information with all of the board members, it was only with the town manager and Kendra, and his emails were saying, "Again, I will, I would not want to embark on anything which provides political capital." So there are three examples of emails where Hank Dixon is very...
What's the ethical violation?
That the decision has already been made for this plan before public hearing is done, and that the town is moving forward...
Where's your proof that the decision has been made?
Because you have agreed to the master plan without involving the public...
The master plan's already been approved. The master plan was approved last month. You're saying that this decision, there's an ethical violation of this council regarding this decision...
That the continuation of approving for the parking deck. The parking deck was never, ever discussed in any of the village district plans.
And you've libeled myself and the members of this board.
I have, I have the emails in there.
Because you have no facts of any ethical violation. You're talking about Facebook likes being taken down.
Would you like to see the emails between, between you and I in terms of how you've been talking to me about not providing...
That's not an ethical violation if you don't like the way I'm talking to you. That's not an ethical violation.
What about a professional? What about a professional?
Are these the ones that we have seen also?
I've seen.
Yeah.
Not all of you have seen stuff, because some of the stuff they're doing, it's not everybody's included.
John, professional, that's what I'm questioning.
All right. If you don't like my professionalism, that's fine, but I am getting a, and members of this board are getting an ethical violation.
I have every right to file one, don't I? And then isn't there a process to be listened to through this process? I mean, right? Don't I have that process?
This is a public hearing on a, on a site plan.
Exactly. If I wouldn't do it here, I never get a voice. This is the only way that somebody can have a voice.
You could write an ethical, an allegation of ethical complaint to Mr. Simmons, if you have one against me, but you have alleged no facts, and you've come up here in front of TV in this audience...
I have, I have, this is the information that I will give that has the facts behind it. I think that this starts an investig, this, the code of...
Yes, we'll have to call the FBI. We will have to call the FBI if you're making an ethical violation against me. So yes, there will be an investigation.
Mr. Chafano is having an opinion on something an ethical violation?
No, sir.
Not to my knowledge.
Well, I'm still going to file. As a resident, I do have a right with the code of ethics policy to file a grievance, and this is what I have. And I'm going to file it with the town council or with the town manager. When I look through the different statute, no, I'm not a lawyer, and I see that you're wanting to threaten me that I'm going to get sued, okay. I guess I'll have to get a lawyer. But that's the kind of, that's the narrative the town has. If you don't like what we, what residents are saying, then we get threatened, we get told this isn't going to happen, we're not going to help you.
Not correct at all.
That's my, that's my experience. And in the hundreds of hours I've been trying to build this case for why this plan is moving forward so quickly without opportunities for residents to have a say in it, that's, that's the issue. That's the issue.
You can do that without alleging ethics violations. Does that mean something? I lose my...
Well, every other time I've asked for information, I've been denied.
That's not true.
Well, you're right, that's not true. I have had some Freedom of Information Act, the other stuff that you have been...
Ma'am, we could talk about the, we could talk about your public records request privately. You know, I, we did our best to comply.
My, my ethics violation is being filed with the town manager, because that is part of what this code of ethics says I could do, and it's against you and several of the council members. And part of this is saying that because of the predisposed nature to just move forward with this plan, I'm asking that any motion on the town square be tabled, so that my ethics violation can be investigated, or have it, have the hearing extended to another time when you can actually look into the hearing, to my, my allegations. Happy to meet with you, Chuck, I'll go through all of this in detail, and I'm giving you guys a copy of what that is. I'm a resident, I get to have a voice, I have statutes that say that I have that.
Well, you are, and I understand that, but I take some of this very personally, because you asked me for my cellphone text messages?
Mm-hmm.
And I said no, because I have a personal cellphone, and you have no right to do that unless you have a court order.
Actually, I asked Mr. Chafano, and he said I could. So I did.
No, please, please stop, please stop quoting me. Please stop quoting me right now.
I have it in email.
Personal, personal text messages are not public information.
I didn't, I didn't ask for personally, I asked for town-related emails on, when I was talking.
And the mayor told you that he had no town-related...
Yeah, he had no, he complied, he complied. On that particular request, other Freedom of Information Act requests have not been complied.
That's not true.
No.
I have...
Ms. Kelly, I have a quick question. When you say fast-tracked, what, I'm trying to get an idea of, like, do you have a timeframe?
I have an email when I met with, well, apparently I can't say when I met with Mr. Chafano, so I won't say that, but I was given the impression that this process would be more into like November or December timeframe. And then in emails, when I have the Freedom of Information Act, it was, how fast can this go move forward? And it was stated, the fastest we could do it is if we start in October 17th, and we could file the deed within 30 days. And my issue with that is that there is actually a North Carolina statute that says for closing a road, you need to have four weeks of, of published statements, and you have to have a public hearing. And I was asking, when is all that going to happen in email? And I was told I'm, that I was not going to give that answer. So when I'm asking very valid questions, I'm not getting the answers. And given that, I've seen emails where folks have said, regardless of what she's saying, we're moving forward, this is a project too important, I've been positioned as trying to stop downtown development. I mean, I have been miss-spoken about, misrepresented. The last time I spoke in an email, Mr. Chafano said that these were my, like, this is what I was trying to say, which was not true. So I've been misrepresented several times along the way, and I would love the opportunity to show you that as well, as part of my grievance. So to me, it would be inappropriate for you guys to make any motions on these properties because of my, my request to have a code of ethics review. I'm trying to look for the original to give you guys, and then I guess I'm done.
Chris Harrell, are you next? Where are you are? Hang on, Chris, just a second.
Yeah, I need to file, oh, here it is. Oh, and I am, if I do get elected, I cannot vote on any of this because I just signed the code of ethics and I would stick to it. So just letting you know.
Chris, name and address, please.
I am Chris Harrell, 129 Chandler Springs Drive.
Sir, if you could just hold on, tell us.
Sir, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris.
I'm Chris Harrell, 129 Chandler Springs Drive in the Autumn Park subdivision. I also own and operate a consulting firm on Raleigh Street in Holly Springs, as well as I'm one of the owners of the coworking station in Holly Springs. I relocated to Holly Springs a little over six years ago. Prior to moving here, my brother and I researched everything you could possibly think of in every metro area in the U.S. to decide where we were going to move. We were total nerds, we created spreadsheets, we, you know, researched cost of living, weather, crime, schools, you name it, we researched everything. And all our research led us to right here in Holly Springs, North Carolina. That's why we decided to move here, but not only us, we moved our company here, we moved, our parents moved here, my sister moved here, even our in-laws moved here. And since being here, I've fallen in love with this town. I live here, I work here, and for the most part, I spend most of my free time here. However, I think all of us can agree that there's still one thing that's missing in Holly Springs, and that is that we don't have a true downtown. Ever since I've been here, it seems to be the one thing that people can mostly agree on is that we need a downtown. I personally couldn't agree with that statement more. My brother and I and some of our partners recently took it upon ourselves to fix that problem, and to give the people of Holly Springs what they want and what they need. And so for us, this is a big deal. We are not your typical developers. I think when people think of developers, they think of these giant corporations with this unlimited amount of money. But for us, we're just citizens and business owners in Holly Springs, and we're pretty much putting everything we have on the line to make this dream a reality for us. And so we've had plans to develop a 50,000-square-foot mixed-use-down building downtown. And our vision for this is to be kind of the hangout area in downtown Holly Springs. You don't really need a reason to be there, it's just going to be an area to come in, hang out. There'll be a rooftop bar, there's an outdoor amphitheater that can seat over 100 people. We've designed this in a way to complement the downtown community that already exists. It'll complement things like the farmer's market and the Christmas parade. In addition to this, there's two other reasons that we are looking to move forward with this project. One is we have several, our companies are spread over four different locations in Holly Springs, and we're busting at the seams. So this will allow us to be together in the same location, so we can continue to grow our company in a efficient and economical way. And two, we have an agreement with the town to operate the coworking station. And part of that agreement is we promised the town of Holly Springs that we were going to do everything we could to keep coworking station in downtown Holly Springs. And so our contract with the town of Holly Springs expires in March of 2019. At that time, the town of Holly Springs will take over coworking sta, the building that coworking station is currently in, as they are also busting at the seams and need more administrative space. So we desperately need this project to move forward. The town of Holly Springs desperately needs this project to move forward, and the citizens of Holly Springs desperately want this project to move forward. However, I'm here today because the plans that we currently have are in jeopardy. There have been requests for an updated village district plan, as well as opposition to the closing of a small portion of Raleigh Street, that is a 250-foot section of road that runs behind the car wash. Well, I do want to be sensitive to this request. I don't feel that this is the right time, and ultimately, I don't think this is a necessary, this is necessary or a good use of taxpayer money. The original VDAC plan was created in 2005, and has been modified three different times, most certainly recently as of March of 2014. In the meantime, there has literally been almost, I shouldn't say no, but very little construction in downtown Holly Springs. We could maybe say no. And essentially, the area is the same as it was when this plan was created. Requiring an updated VDAC or opposing the closing of Raleigh Street at a very minimum will result in a significant delay to our project and could possibly prevent us from moving forward with our project altogether. Our plans, as well as the plans of the other project that is next door to us, call for a new road to be built. The only way this road can be built is if a small portion of Raleigh Street is closed and the Rogers Street is extended. Otherwise, this will create a very dangerous five-way intersection. We have already... We've already invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into this project. And unfortunately, we're not in a position where we can afford to wait for an updated, uh, DVA, uh, VDAP plan. Um, as you know, these things don't happen overnight. Uh, it could be six months, a year. Who knows how long it could take for one of these plans to be approved. Um, not only would this be devastating for us financially, um, but this could preclude us from developing in downtown altogether. And could also, uh, create a domino effect that could result in the permanent closing of coworking station, as well as force us to relocate our companies outside of Holly Springs, as we don't currently have many options to us that fit our needs. Uh, so in closing, I'd personally like to thank you for approving the master plan, uh, that you already have approved. I would like to thank you, uh, the town of Holly Springs for working with us so far to make this dream a reality. And I'd even like to thank those that, um, care enough about this town to, uh, request an updated plan. However, I don't believe now is the time. I think the town is on the cusp of something great. Let's not put that in jeopardy. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
Stephen Chan. Name and address, please, Stephen.
Hi, my name is Stephen Chan. I'm from, uh, Sun, 309 Sunset Growth. I'm going to share with you about, um, my business here in Holly Springs. That's my first, uh, thank the mayor, town council, and the town staff for giving me this opportunity. Um, back in 2002, 15 years ago, my family and I moved down here to Holly Springs from Pittsburgh to join a couple of friends to start, uh, our company, Rendering House. We specialize in creating renderings and graphics, uh, for the new home construction industry. Like many companies, we started working in the bonus room and expanded into the garage. Uh, we knew we had to look for a permanent office space. After considering several areas in the triangle area, I convinced my partners to set roots to not just Holly Springs, but downtown Holly Springs. So in 2007, we moved to one of the office condos across the street from the town hall. Like many companies that year, we took a hit during the Great Economic Recession. However, because we had clients in different markets across the country, we were able to recover quickly. As we grew, we considered again moving to other locations, uh, for larger office space. In 2013, we decided to remain in downtown Holly Springs and double our office space with another office unit. Uh, despite that expansion, we quickly ran out of space again in just two years. So Rendering House came to a cross roads again for the third time, uh, as we consider on how to transition from a small to a medium-sized company. Uh, we knew we had to be in an attractive location to recruit talent, and Holly Springs is certainly a great place to be. Uh, we also knew that remaining in Holly Springs would cause the least amount of disruption to employees and their families. However, because our options in Holly Springs were very limited, uh, we had considered relocating to Cary or Raleigh or other locations. Fortunately, this year, uh, early this year, I met up with Arena from, uh, Economic Development and learned about the downtown development plan or the master plan. And I was excited to learn about all the new office spaces that would be, uh, built right here in downtown, perhaps ju, uh, spring or summer of 2019. Um, my partners and I believe we can hold out on our own expansion until that time. Uh, we have already started conversations with the developers to double our office space again. Uh, we hope the plans for downtown development do not get delayed, as it may require us to consider other options. Uh, last thing I want to conclude and let you know that Rendering House has grown from being just a graphics company, uh, to a content creation and software company, serving hundreds of clients across the country. We have become one of the top, uh, companies in the industry as we have expanded into cutting-edge technology, including augmented and virtual reality. As a minority-owned company, we value diversity in our employee recruitment. We are also blessed to have a creative high-tech team with graduates from UNC Chapel Hill, NC State, ECU, Virginia Tech, Carnegie Mellon, and Wake Tech. Uh, over the last 15 years, I've enjoyed working and raising my family here in Holly Springs. On the rare days, uh, when I don't have to drive my kids around, I even have a chance to bike to work. Uh, again, thank you for creating the, uh, master plan for the town, and, uh, we hope we think it'll smooth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point in time, a close of public hearing. Want to come back, Sean? Continue on if you wish.
Any further questions?
Any further comments or questions, Sean? Seeing none?
With regards to the five-foot reduction, is that going to impact pedestrian right-of-way there? Will it impact having, uh, uh, street trees, sidewalks, garbage cans, benches, or anything else, uh, like encroaching that close?
So the, uh, proposed structure will be right along the edge of the right-of-way. Uh, there will be an eight-foot sidewalk between the back of the curb and the edge of the structure. Uh, that will include street trees. Typically, we would have, like, we would have a five-foot sidewalk with the street tree. So the fact that it's eight feet wide, that gives more than enough room for pedestrian movement along that sidewalk.
All right. And, uh, all the, the open aspects of the parking garage there at the ground, at the ground level, is that meant for pedestrians to go in and out? Is it?
So there are, uh, let's see here.
All those bays?
Yep. So this is, this is the Avent Ferry Road facing elevation. Um, this corner of the structure, this is where Ballantyne Street would be on this side. Um, so there is a pedestrian entrance, uh, right here at the corner. Um, and I can show you on the site plan here. Um, so here's West Ballantyne Street, Avent Ferry Road. Uh, there is a pedestrian access right at the corner from both sides here. Um, there is a pedestrian entrance, um, along this side here. This is the vehicular entrance off of Avent Ferry Road. Um, so vehicles will enter the lower level. In this location, there's a pedestrian entrance there as well. Um, and pedestrians will be able to enter the parking, uh, the top level from, um, the adjacent development from their plaza area. Um, so tho, those will be all of the pedestrian entrances. And then the vehicular entrance to the top level will be off of West, uh, West Rogers Street extension.
So none of those areas that show, show open would be accessible to just walk through? There'd be some sort of, uh?
That is correct. Um, as you can, yep, on the zoom in here, there is a, a stone base and a brick base. Really, the openings are to allow for ventilation of the parts of the underneath.
The other questions at this point? Seeing none. We have four motions. Somebody want to start?
I've got a question, John. In reference to Mrs. Kelly's testimony?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we can still vote on it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Back to number one. A motion to adopt Resolution 17 dash 46 to make and accept the findings of fact for special exception uses 17 SEU 08 and 12, variances of development standards, 17 VAR TC 04, 05, and 06, and waivers of architectural and design requirements 17 WAV 23 and 25 as submitted by CLH Design PA and Little Diversified Architectural Consulting. Second. Motion made in second round favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number two.
I'll make the motion, uh, having made the necessary findings of fact, a motion to grant waivers of UDO Regulation 17 WAV 23 and 25 in association with the development petition for Town Hall Commons Public Parking.
Second. Motion made in second round favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number three.
Having made the necessary findings of fact, motion to approve variance petitions 17 dash VAR TC dash 04, dash 05, and 06 in association with the development petition for Town Hall Commons Public Parking.
Second. Motion made in second round favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number four and last.
Having made the necessary findings of fact, a motion to approve special exception uses 17 SEU dash 08 to allow for a new project in the TV Town Village District, 17 dash SEU dash 12 to allow for a parking garage in the TV Town Village District and Development Plan 17 dash DP dash 10 for Town Hall Commons Public Parking and Infrastructure with conditions described in agenda packets.
Second. Motion made in second round favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Agenda item 8A, consent agenda, Mayor Potem.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second. Motion made in second round favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Agenda item 9A, new business comprehensive transportation plan update, dash cleanup, Kendra Parrish. I like that.
I, um, we have a comprehensive transportation plan that was originally adopted June of 2011. And then there was an amendment, uh, July of 2013. And comprehensive transportation plans, as you would see if you peruse the document, it's based on, um, you take your existing land use plan, you build that out, it shows what kind of roads need to be improved. Um, we actually use the regional traffic model, um, that is in this area, includes the whole county. And it shows the cross-sections of the roads, which there's no, um, you know, shocker here, a lot of our roads need to be widened. And it looked at 2040 build-out. Um, there's a update planned for the comprehensive transportation plan after, uh, so CAMPO, as I talked about earlier, is an acronym for Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. Um, a few years ago, they did a Southwest area study. And we actually had, we used that, um, as, for some guidance. And they looked at the 55 corridor, Apex, Holly Springs, Fuquay, Anger, parts of the county, Wake County, and parts of Northern Harnett County were included in that study. And they basically looked at different land use scenarios and, um, not only roadways, but transit and pedestrian, greenway, sidewalks, whatnot. Um, they're getting ready to update that study again. And so we're going to be participating in that. There's lots of public input, as was with the previous version. Um, once that's completed, as well as once our Southern Area Planning Initiative is completed, we'll be taking that information. And then we will, um, go ahead and do a large update of our comprehensive transportation plan. Um, so that's the plan going forward for the, you know, a major update to the comprehensive transportation plan. Those documents are usually, I mean, depending on how many improvements are actually being done, um, the longevity of those plans can be expanded. What's before you tonight are minor updates, just to get the plan in line with some changes that have, you know, we, over the last year, we've gotten a few changes, and this is what it is to clean it up. Um, I've got them outlined here on the screen for you. Um, I'll just touch on those. All cross-section dimensions were adjusted to make them uniform. So utility strips, that's the strip behind the back of curb and the sidewalk, um, sidewalk, sidewalk width, and then right-of-way dimensions. It was doing some cleanup there to make those more uniform in nature. Through the coordination of Wake County and Apex, an adjustment was made to the proposed thoroughfare alignment through the landfill. So for years, on our comprehensive transportation plan, it shows Sunset Lake Road crossing the bypass over to the landfill and headed west. Um, that's actually a little bit, like Sunset Lake Road from the centerline south is Holly Springs jurisdiction. From the centerline north is Apex. Um, and as you know, with the landfill, it's Wake County property. So that alignment has tweaked just a little bit. The extension of Grigsby Avenue through Sugg Farm was removed. Um, for years, we showed Grigsby Avenue, um, connecting over to Nature's Reach, actually. Um, but once Sugg Farm, we got that land, um, that needed to be taken off. I mean, that's a no-brainer. Um, Stevenson Road was modified to have three lanes. Um, prior to that, it was less. Sportsmanship Road was modified to reflect the updated alignment. Um, a modification to Ralph Stevens Road was made to reflect the median spacing modification needed due to power lines, gas lines, and environmental features. That's, um, on the south side of Ralph Stevens Road. There's a really large gas line easement, um, a power line easement, and a creek. And if you follow your median spacing guidelines, where it's a full opening is right there in the middle of the gas, the power easement and a stream. So we've just adjusted the median spacings, not a really big deal. Um, but wanted to point that out. And then all cross-section details were removed, and they reside in our engineering design and construction standards. Um, that's just, we had, at, at one time, we had details in the comprehensive transportation plan, and we had details in our engineering design construction standards, two different documents, more room for error. Um, so we just moved those details all to the standards. So that's all the updates that are tonight for the CTP. And, um, we're thinking late 2018 is probably, possibly early 19, but that's when the Southwest Area Study will be complete, um, as well as the SAPI, um, the Southern Area Planning Initiative. We do want those two documents prior to going into a, a major overhaul of any kind of CTP.
So stair step one and two, the other. Got it?
Yes.
But even with just these, these revisions and prior revisions, even though that transportation plan is date stamped 2011, it is relatively different compared to its original version.
The, um, you know, the one that we originally did, well, most, the 2013, there hasn't been a lot of changes since there because it was a multi-year document. So if you looked at that 2013 version, it said in 2040, there's going to be this many cars on this road, and it needs to be four-lane median divided. Um, those, that kind of information is still relevant. Whether we have 14,000 cars or 18,000 cars, that road still needs to be four-lane median divided. So, um, the document still stands the way it is.
I'm saying, just that these various revisions where we might have done something a little different or added something where we didn't expect it.
Modified.
You know, various modifications over time is relatively different than the original document.
Yes. Uh-huh. Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have one motion. There it is.
I'll make the motion to approve revisions to the comprehensive transportation plan. Second.
Motion made in second round favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Kendra. Here's one I've been looking forward to. I think a lot of our people have too. About history, let's go to agenda item 9B, new business, Needham Norris site purchase, Chuck Simmons.
Yes, sir. Um, we met several months ago, and I'm not specific on the date, but we had a workshop, council members will recall, and we talked about the need to preserve the Needham Norris, uh, house. And it's currently located, or it's been located, um, for a number of years, uh, at the, at the current site of where the Mills at Avent Ferry subdivision is located. Uh, at that workshop, we talked about ver, various options, uh, everything from possibly relocating the home to, um, possibly purchasing the property and, and trying to, to save the home. But I, I think during that workshop, uh, while there was no ultimate strategy beyond trying to save the home, it was, we were directed, staff was directed to meet with the developer, Jeff Smurco, and try to negotiate a purchase price if the developer was interested in selling the home to the town. Uh, staff has met, uh, on two or three occasions with, with Mr. Smurco, uh, and he is agreeable to selling the home. Uh, it's situated on, on two lots, uh, so it would require the purchase of two lots on behalf of the town at a cost of $190,000, which is the price that he would sell the lots individually for, I believe, uh, $95,000 apiece. That's the market value for the, for the lots that are currently selling there. So that's where that, that price came from. Um, and in addition, he had asked for some relief on the stormwater maintenance fees, which, uh, the town, in, in the amount of $43,000, those are typically paid for, uh, by a developer, uh, to, uh, and put into an escrow account so that in the event, the developer or the homeowners association fails to meet its obligation on the stormwater, uh, BMP maintenance, then the town can come in and it'll have money, uh, available to, uh, to go in and do the proper maintenance. Um, in order to safeguard the town's interest with respect to the stormwater maintenance fees, the town would become a member, because it would have, would own the, the two, uh, properties in question, would become a, a member of the, uh, Mills at Avent Ferry Homeowners Association. We would not be required to pay dues, but that's relevant because we would have legal standing to bring, to, to go against the homeowners association in the future if the, uh, you know, if the developer or the homeowners association, the neighborhood community failed to meet its obligations with stormwater BMPs. Uh, historically, the town's not had, has had good experience with, with the maintenance of those. And, uh, Ms. Parrish with engineering can, can, uh, address if you, if you have specific questions. But to my knowledge, we've not had to go into that escrow account in the past, uh, you know, to, to go in and take over essentially the maintenance of these stormwater amenities. Uh, those are, you know, so... Those are, you know, so that, we've had a pretty good history with that. But what this will grant us, if the town directs council and myself, we will put together a purchase agreement, we'll come back to the council with an actual purchase agreement, we'll also have budget amendments that we'll be putting in place because we will have to appropriate money for this purchase. Obviously, we did not have money appropriated at the time of budget approval, but we will have, we do have monies available to do this. And then I think at a later time, what this will do, it will preserve the home, the house, and then we can evaluate our options, maybe have someone, Mr. Bradham from Capital Area Planning, I think would be, probably be a good idea to come down and speak to us on maybe what some of his recommendations are with the house, and then the council can make a decision down the road on what it wants to do with the property.
Just a question, I had a curiosity. The $43,000 for the stormwater fees and everything, that's a lot more than what stormwater fees would be for just two lots, so.
Yes, sir. That would be for the.
What was the rationale for that?
Well, it was proposed by the developer. It was, and he actually proposed a lot more, but that was, that was the one remaining fee that was in, you know, that he sort of held out for.
Was available for him to negotiate with.
Correct. Correct. I mean, so, you know, there aren't, there's no exchange of any or any reduction in water, sewer reserves, or parks and recreation fee credits. Those monies can be spent by the town and are often spent by the town on capital improvements, whereas the stormwater maintenance fee is just strictly an escrow account. We never touch it, you know, until we have to.
So we would fund that 43, and we would not fund?
We would not fund that 43. No, sir.
Okay.
Yes, yes. But perhaps Ms. Parrish can elaborate on how that works, because we don't talk a lot about those fees.
You said the 40? Wait.
Yeah, come on down. Sorry, Kendra.
So for every development project, they have to do their best management practices. So there's ponds on the Mills at Avent Ferry that they have to put in, and what we require is, once they go in and they live for a year, then they have a cost estimate to us. If and when, it's like a potted plant, and at some point, it will need some updates, right? So we say, whatever it costs to fix these BMPs, you have to take 35% of that cost estimate and put it in cash escrow. We do that for each BMP. Now, all BMPs won't fail at the same time, and HOAs are responsible. So the first line of defense is the HOA is responsible for updating these, you know, fixing these BMPs. If the HOA does not do it, we have a pool of money that is 35% of all these BMPs that we then could go in, repair it, and then seek financial, you know, back from the HOA.
Reimbursement.
Reimbursement, yeah. So it's not really a fee. It is a, he has to scratch a check at 35%, and 35% of those BMPs is the 43 or what. Right.
But we're not going to, we're not going to fund that until it would become necessary after the HOA.
So he doesn't have to write us a check. So it's like $43,000 that he doesn't have to pay. He doesn't write us a check. We become part of the HOA so that if, in this particular case, when it, like, say one of the BMPs did go bad and the HOA didn't fix it, we're part of the HOA, and we can get that, get them to fix it.
Okay. Just, our true cost basically upfront is going to be $190,000, what we're going to fund at this point in time. Does that?
That is correct.
That's, that's.
And we still have the same legal remedies to go, you know, protect the town's interest if stormwater amenity fails. Yes.
Are there questions or comments? We've all seen the presentations, I think.
I think they were pretty clear during that public work session that what we want town staff to do. We were pretty clear with get control of this property. So thanks for your work with doing that.
We're a little late getting, preserving history, but there's no time like the present to start.
Anything else? Motion.
Motion to authorize the town manager and town attorney to enter into a purchase agreement for two lots with Avent Ferry developers to secure the purchase of the house located at 2329 Avent Ferry Road.
Second.
Motion made in second round, favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Good job.
Nice.
Well, town attorney put in a lot of work on this one to close the deal, as well as, I think, I know our engineering director and I believe our planning director as well. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, good. I remember 10 other business. I got a couple. Crosswalk, safety, speeding, but more importantly, during what our friend Carl Dean used to say, this is silly season. I ask everybody, including me, to have respect for everybody. Respect is the word that comes to my mind. Respect. Managers report. Oops, excuse me. Anybody else on other business?
Nope. Hey, buddy? Nope.
Now, managers report.
All right, I'm going to break out the glasses. October's a very busy month, so this Saturday on the 21st, we have Fire Station One Open House, and that's from 10 until 2:00. So the public is invited to attend. They can meet sender. Some of the kids can get on fire engines, and also any visitors can have an opportunity to tour our fire station facility, which is really state-of-the-art. So that would be this coming Saturday. We have our community engagement meeting number two, which is next Thursday on the 26th, and that'll be starting at 5:30 at Town Hall, and that's for the Southern Area Planning Initiative. That's our second of three meetings. So we had, we had pretty good turnout at the last one. I think we, you know, would have, you know, could have been a few more, but anyway, if someone was busy that night, did not have an opportunity to go to that first meeting and is interested in what's going on in the Southern Area Planning jurisdiction or boundaries, they are certainly invited to come out. So that's on the 26th, next Thursday. Finally, we have Hollyfest on the 28th from 10 until 4:00 at SUG Farm, and we actually will not have another meeting until November, so that's why we're going out a little bit further on the 28th.
The haunted hayride after Hollyfest will be that evening.
Do you know the time of that? I did not have that on my calendar.
Neither.
I don't know exactly the time.
Haunted hayride?
Seven to midnight.
Seven till midnight, yes.
Seven to midnight?
At SUG Farm, that evening.
Yes. Excellent. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
By the way, before we go to the last question, if you bring kids down to the fire station, make sure you ask Joe Horassy or the chief to get sender up on the front bumper, and sender poses. Sender poses. His little feet together, it's the most incredible thing you've ever seen, and he knows you're getting a picture taken.
He knows, yeah.
I just want to mention that.
Piece of ham.
Counselor.
There is no need for a closed session. I just do want to mention one thing.
Sure.
You know, there's been an ethical violation, ethics complaint violation against me. The town will have to hire outside counsel to investigate that matter. I'll leave that to Mr. Simmons. You know, I would suggest Ernie Pearson, who used to be the town attorney here. Been practicing for 17 years. This is unprecedented, never happened before. Nobody's ever suggested that I've done anything unethical, and I don't know what the contents of this material is, but I.
Understood.
Well, don't feel lonely. I've never been asked for my text messages on my personal phone either, so. But take it from there.
I would suggest about $10,000 would probably be a good budget for that work.
Very good, sir. Ready? Anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Thanks for coming.